All right. Drive a motion to return to open session.
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitry.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Drive a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Gitry and Ms. Purcell, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitry.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Want to say welcome to everybody I'm here tonight. Sorry for being a few minutes late as we came out of closed session there. Before we get into our honors, awards, and recognitions, we do want to take a minute and think about all the folks affected by the recent weather, in particular in North Carolina, Tennessee, and here in southwest Virginia. You know, all the emergency responders and the folks who've been working so hard to help recover and repair from all the damage. Certainly, all the folks who've had their homes and their properties destroyed or damaged as a part of this. And certainly, above all else, all those people who had their lives lost, families who lost loved ones, in particular, one of our own teachers here in Montgomery County. So let's take a moment of silence and reflect on them. Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we're going to do our student representatives tonight, our Mallory Akers from Auburn High School, and Marina Lee from Blacksburg High School. Will you please read our mission and belief statements?
MCPS is an innovative educational community. We value diversity and we are committed to equity and inclusion. MCPS empowers learners to realize success in an ever-changing global society through collaboration with communities, families, staff, and students. MCPS provides a safe, engaging learning environment and intentional exposure to positive social, emotional, and academic experiences.
Our beliefs start off with all students can learn in order to pursue their dreams. Schools are safe places of joy, wonder, and creativity. Every person deserves to be loved, valued, and respected. Kindness is an essential skill of responsible, productive community member. The diversity of our community is one of our greatest strengths. All people deserve equitable access to opportunities and resources. Every child deserves an advocate. Honoring the voices of students and other stakeholders strengthens the school's community. Open communication and feedback are vital to our growth.
Learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community. And relationship building and high expectations are foundational to student success.
Okay, great. Thank you both. Our next item of business is a student representative reports. Mallory, do you have a report from Auburn High School?
I do. Our attendance for the past month in September was averaging ninety-five percent or higher for each day. The lowest was probably ninety-four percent. So far, we've had several college visits from Rafford, UVA, Virginia Tech, and on Monday, JMU is coming to visit. Our football team, we don't have a varsity team, but the bright side of it is our JV football team has been undefeated so far this season, and they are setting up for success for next season. Our cheer competition team, I spoke with one student, and they said that they felt that they are more competitive on the mat this year, and everyone feels the need to win the season. Last year, they had eleven people, and this year, they have grown to nineteen. And they are working very hard for a strong run in the postseason. Our band team, every year, they usually get first place in percussion. There may be a couple times that they haven't. But despite new, younger members, they are still expecting to succeed this year. Our volleyball teams are both undefeated, which is the varsity and the JV one. Cross-country teams, they are both state contenders. Our golf team has been very dominant, and they have been scoring at or below three hundred all season. The MAC teams are starting to form. I spoke with the English MAC coach, and he had said that the English MAC team shows academics are cool. He was very proud of it. And people have expressed that they have a great experience doing this, and it's a lot of fun for them. Our drama club, the members are very dedicated. They put in a lot of effort, and they are overall an amazing group who should succeed. They've grown a lot since last year, and they are currently working on two one-act plays, one for their competition season and one for just fun. And Beta Club, they have been doing a community service, and they've been collecting gently-used toys and new toys for the Ronald McDonald House in Roanoke, and they have eight to ten, like, moving-sized boxes full of stuff to donate there.
Great, thanks, Mallory. Marina, do you have a report from Blacksburg High School?
Yeah, so Blacksburg High School has an eventful month ahead of us. We are holding a choir concert at the school tonight and have our parent teen driver's ed presentation tomorrow night at 6:30 PM. Marching band has had a successful start to their competition season and will compete at City Stadium in Lynchburg on Saturday, October 5th. The juniors and seniors will play their annual Powderpuff game this Friday, and we have our first Spirit Day, which will kick off our homecoming week from October 7th to October 12th. The BHS Homecoming Parade will be on Wednesday, October 9th at 6:00, with our football game taking place against Christiansburg for our homecoming game on Friday, October 11th. We finish homecoming on Saturday with our homecoming dance, the theme being "A Night in Vegas: Let the Good Times Roll." The school counseling department held its senior parent post-secondary meeting as well. The golf team remains undefeated and has an eye set for the state championship tournament on October 14th, making for an exciting few weeks ahead of us.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, Dr. Barbara Wickham, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will start our presentation for Seniors of the Month.
Good evening, school board members, Chair Hudson and Dr. Bragan. A special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of an outstanding senior from each of our four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles of these exceptional students will be displayed on the screen during the presentation and in the lobby of our central office. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior, along with a quote from the teacher or administrator who nominated it. teacher or administrator who nominated them for this recognition. Each school administrator will come forward to present in the following order. Keith Palmer, Assistant Principal of Blacksburg High School; Shane Gwynn, Principal of Christiansburg High School; and Todd Lewis, Principal of Eastmont High School. Our Senior of the Month from Auburn High School could not be present tonight. She will be celebrated next month alongside Auburn's November Senior of the Month. Mr. Palmer.
Good evening, members, members of the board, and Dr. Bragan. It is my privilege to present to you the Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month. This evening, I would like to recognize Elizabeth Zhang as the October Blacksburg High School Senior of the Month. Elizabeth is here with her family, and I would like to invite them to join me right now. I would like to share a brief statement from one of Elizabeth's teachers, who has recognized her as an outstanding and deserving student. This statement highlights just how exceptional Elizabeth truly is. Elizabeth has consistently demonstrated exceptional academic abilities in the field of science. Her passion for science inquiry is truly commendable. She approaches every project and assignment with an unparalleled level of enthusiasm and dedication. Elizabeth is not afraid to push boundaries and think outside the box when it comes to problem-solving and critical thinking. Her ability to grasp complex scientific concepts and apply them in practical scenarios is truly impressive. Elizabeth is a natural leader who leads by example and inspires her peers to strive for excellence. Her ability to collaborate effectively with others is evident through her involvement in team-based projects and extracurricular activities. Elizabeth has a remarkable talent for bringing people together and fostering a positive and inclusive working environment that encourages collaboration and mutual support. Congratulations, Elizabeth.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Bragan, and student representatives. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize one of our outstanding seniors this evening. It is my pleasure to introduce the October Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School as Raven Smith. I would like to ask Raven and her family to come forward at this time, please. When asking one of her teachers to describe Raven, they said, "Raven is an outstanding, exceptional young woman with outstanding moral character. She is full of thought and introspection, and she tackles any assignment in any discipline with the nature of a true scholar. Her discussions on any topic, from the mundane to the extraordinary, are typically riveting. Time and again, Raven has impressed. Outside of the classroom, Raven exhibits the same admirable qualities in her work at a local business, as well as her well-noted volunteerism chronicling history at the Christiansburg Institute. I foresee that her imagination, inquisitiveness, insight, caring nature, and her thoughtfulness will prepare her toward even greater success. I envision for her a great future in her endeavors. After high school, Raven plans to attend college and major in forensic science, psychology, and/or sociology, anthropology." Lots of great choices. Congrats, Raven. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Bragan. It's my honor to be here this evening to recognize the Eastern Montgomery High School Senior of the Month for October, Daven Gravely. Daven is here this evening with his family, and I ask that they come forward at this time. Daven's band teacher, Rachel Colby, said the following about Daven's qualifications for this honor. "Daven Gravely is a hard-working student, a hands-on leader, and a delightful human being. He has served our band program as a performer, drum major, and a go-to for anything a performance needs. Daven meets every difficulty as a challenge he has determined to win. He regularly challenges himself to extend his performance range, helps others traverse difficult rhythms, and is the first to dive into new pieces of music. Daven is always there to assist me when I need sympathetic knowledge in high brass, large instruments moved, or a kind and upfront opinion on the way things should be done. He is openly honest, accountable, and ready with a silly quip to brighten anyone's day. With whatever Daven chooses to pursue in life, I know he will meet it head-on with determination and gusto. He is a delight and privilege to have in my class." Please help me in congratulating Daven. Okay, great, thank you. Next up, Mr. Mark Husband will begin our recognition of the Career and Technical Student Organization State Champion, the Eastern Montgomery High School FFA.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for providing us another opportunity to recognize students for winning state and national academic and co-curricular competitions. Tonight, we are excited to recognize Lily Bowman from Eastern Montgomery High School. I'd like to invite Lily and her teacher, Ms. Emily Castle, to join me at the podium. Lily is an agriculture education student, and she won the State FFA Creed Speaking Competition. Ms. Castle is going to tell us a little bit more about Lily's accomplishment.
Yes, I'm very proud to be here with Lily, and as Mr. Husband mentioned, she won our Virginia State FFA's Creed Speaking Contest this past June at the convention in Blacksburg, and she'll be representing our chapter, our county, and the state of Virginia later this month in Indianapolis, Indiana, at the National FFA Convention. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Lily to let her tell you what her contest is.
Thank you. Whoa. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. And first, I would have a few thank yous to not only my teacher, Ms. Castle, but also to my family. A special thank you for someone very special for the Virginia FFA is in the room tonight. My father, Stephen Bowman, who was the Vice President for the nineteen ninety-seven, nineteen ninety-eight officer team. If you could all give him applause real quickly for all his hard work in the agriculture industry. And on to what Creed Speaking is about. The Creed was written in nineteen thirty-nine by E.M. Tiffany, and not only all FFA members know this, but it is memorized by many. I have worked notoriously for two and a half years to memorize this creed and recite it and made it to state convention last year, but sadly did not win. I have worked very hardly to make the creed known to its full efficiency and full interpretation, and during this contest, I present the five paragraphs of the creed to judges who score me on public speaking skills such as eye contact, voice volume, tone, and pace. After the presentation, I go under a five-minute questioning period in which three questions are asked. At the state contest, I received a high score of ninety-six out of a hundred, and I am working very hardly to make this a perfect score for a national convention at the end of this month. I hope all I learned in this contest helps me to become a better FFA member and enables me more to become a state officer in the summer of twenty twenty-seven. Thank you.
Okay, great, so we're going to ask all the students and their families who were just recognized to kind of come up towards the front, if you will. The school board is going to come down very briefly and congratulate you and say thank you for all your hard work. We'll be right back. All right, great, thanks, everyone. Our next agenda item is public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the board sets aside thirty minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in thirty-minute increments, which Ms. Osborne will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after ninety minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional thirty-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the board. I'll call each speaker up by name in the order that they are signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has thirty seconds remaining and when their time is up. Please state the name and please state your name and the area of the county you live in. The first speaker is Robin Wilson, followed by Lindsey Rich.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Robin Wilson. I'm a thirty-eight-year resident of Montgomery County. I'm a Montgomery County school employee as a substitute in the Auburn and Christiansburg strands. I've had to turn my phone off for phone calls for substitutes because my phone would ring continuously if I didn't. I know there are generally five to twenty substitute positions every day, and a lot of those go unfilled. The county is in desperate need. Our schools, the administration at those schools, the teachers, and the students deserve to have well-paid, consistent, stable substitutes. I don't know and am not accusing what happened in the closed session at the school board meeting where Lindsey Rich's name was taken off of the list. The accusations are that it could be for political and religious reasons. I stand with Lindsey. I am an acquaintance of hers. I know her as a loving mother, as a good wife, as a good community person who's doing what she can to make the community better, much like me. As a mother of eight children, five who have graduated Auburn High School, two that I hope will graduate Auburn High School in twenty twenty-seven, who've stood here before you with accolades and awards, I'm proud of them, I'm proud of our schools, I'm proud of the kids that go, I'm proud of the kids that stood before you tonight. And if there were any political or religious reasons for you to take her off that list, I ask that you revisit that because that is wrong. I ask that you revisit her application for a substitute because the county is in such dire need. It is in your hands that we hire good people to instruct our children. I would like to think that when I walk into a school that the administration is relieved to know they have someone that loves the kids, cares for the kids, maybe educates the kids too as a substitute. I think Lindsey would do a great job at that, and I ask that you revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Next up is Lindsey Rich, followed by Mackenzie West.
Good evening. I'm Lindsey Rich, a resident of Blacksburg with three kids in MCPS schools. I want to say thank you to the board and to all MCPS employees who invest in my children daily. I truly love our community and our public schools. As you know, in twenty twenty-three, I ran for a seat on this board. I knew it would be hard, but I chose to step out of my comfort zone to fill this need. The next nine months were hard on my family as my opponent's supporters vilified and stalked me nonstop, though my policies were simply aligned with those set forth by our governor and the Virginia Department of Education. I wasn't perfect, but I learned some valuable life lessons and leadership skills. I lost the seat by a narrow margin. I thought, okay, I'm not needed now to serve on the board, but there are so many other ways I can serve MCPS, and I've enjoyed volunteering in many capacities in our schools. When I heard that there was a shortage of subs, especially with our special-needs kids, I wasted no time applying to fill the need. I passed the background check, completed my training, and received access. and received access to frontline ed. I was told that once vetted, board approval for subs was merely a rubber stamp. I was shocked when I found out this board had removed my name from the personnel list behind closed doors with no accountability and no explanation before coming back out in open session to vote. Board members, I want you to know that if circumstances were reversed and I had won that seat, I would greatly admire any one of you for stepping up to serve at the lowest level of MCPS after losing an election. I would vote you through in a heartbeat. I understand those teaching or subbing in my kids' classrooms may hold different views than I do. However, public schools are for all, and we are all, to keep our personal views to ourselves in MCPS settings. The election is over and in the past. I've moved on. Why can't you? The last thing I wanted was to be in the public eye again, yet you have put me in a position where I must come here and stand up for myself and for every Montgomery County citizen who may not be liked or hold different views from those of you on this board. Why waste our taxpayer time and money singling people out and causing division when our kids are watching us and need us to step up and fill these positions? The residents of Montgomery County expect more. As a board, you have a responsibility to operate with integrity. I'm calling for unity and peace. It's time for us all in Montgomery County to model for our kids what that looks like by being willing to lay down our pride and work together to serve them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Mackenzie West. Next up is Mackenzie West, followed by Julia Spendle.
Good evening. I'm Mackenzie West, and I live in Reiner, so my kids go to Auburn High School. I am one person, but one of many in Montgomery County. I have a voice, and I've chosen to stand, to come up and speak. It's time for more, better, and checks and balances to practice these values and beliefs: diversity, equity, and inclusion. Last board meeting, when and where there was no accountability but ample time for domination and bullying, a decision was made. This was against the First Amendment, very familiar and less-known Virginia law Title 2.2 on Closed Meeting Procedures, which states, "Except as specifically authorized by law, in no event may any public body take action on matters discussed in any closed meeting, except at an open meeting for which notice was given as required." We have no documentation on what occurred behind this wall. No minutes, audio, definitely no video. When you, the board, emerged, the air was tense with all eyes on you. Lindsay Rich applied for and completed the substitute teacher training. She was ready to work. Here are some questions I hope that many voices will emerge from their safe and quiet circles to ask. Who was on the substitute teacher's list to be approved at the last meeting on September 17th? How many were approved? How many were denied? For what justifiable reason were they denied? Why were these decisions made in secret exclusion and not in public eye? From the result of that secret segment of the last board meeting, it has become apparent and urgent that we, the people of Montgomery County, install more checks and balances. More protection for those who hold justice, goodness, and integrity. Board members, be above reproach. Lean into boundaries that allow you to hold your heads up high, knowing you have nothing to hide or be ashamed of or indicted for. The First Amendment declares freedom of speech and religion. Even with differing views, we have equal opportunities for services which are in desperate need of filling. Montgomery County has posters everywhere begging people to apply quickly for substitute teachers in other working positions. No more decision-making behind closed walls, or, excuse me, behind walls and closed doors without any form of accountable documentation. You represent us. Please be transparent in making decisions that we support. I am a voice, and you are a voice. You are a community member. Stand, speak for goodness, justice, and integrity, people considering decisions that glorify our Maker, Redeemer, and King. It's not more than we can handle with our Savior's strength. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West. Next up is Julia Spendle, followed by Grace.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Those are the words I would hear every single morning at school, Monday through Friday, ever since I immigrated to the United States three years ago. First, I thought it was quite meaningless to recite them over and over again, but now that I'm a junior in Blacksburg High School, I realize how important these words are. So, liberty and justice for all. What does that mean? Liberty and justice for all grants every person, regardless of gender, race, economic status, political ideology, or religious background, same treatment and judgment based on laws and policies. So here are the written requirements for aspiring substitute teachers to be judged on. A candidate needs to be over the age of 21 years old with a high school diploma. They have to have passed a background check ensuring safety for the students. They have to successfully taken a course to show capability to do their job. Lindsay Rich, just like any other approved candidate, has fulfilled these requirements, yet has been denied. So judge based on your own policies and laws rather than your personal opinions and assumptions, and declare liberty and justice not only with your voices, but with your actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Audience, I'd like to remind you that there's no applause or disruptions because you're just taking time away from other speakers. Thank you. Next up is Grace, followed by Mercy.
Hi, my name is Grace, and I'm a senior at Blacksburg High School. I'm going to take y'all back to experience I had at one of this district's high schools. As usual, I walked through the doors of my classroom with the expectation of learning that day, but to my surprise, there was no teacher present. Me and my classmates waited for a teacher to show up for about 30 minutes before we debated on what we should do next. An entire classroom of high school students alone. This showed me how serious the issue of having a shortage of substitute teachers really is and how it affects us as students. This shows an obvious demand. Is it more important to get across any personal bias rather than providing a safe learning space? I am here to speak on behalf of my mother, Lindsay Rich, who I deeply love and appreciate. She has a passion for children's education. She has experienced homeschooling and teaching classes at our high school co-op, our homeschool co-op. She is perfect for the substitute position. She cares for students and their well-being. However, people make assumptions based on her ideological standing and views. I was publicly humiliated in front of my class when a teacher made false assumptions about my mother. Therefore, you should see my mom as a sweet, qualified person instead of making assumptions based on political and religious beliefs. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Mercy, followed by Susanna Rich.
My name is Mercy Rich, and there's a serious need of substitute teachers in the Blacksburg schools. We need to get more substitutes. As a student of Blacksburg High School, I've had some pretty, like, interesting substitutes, and I think getting more new substitutes might help that. So it confuses me a little bit of why my mom was rejected to be a substitute teacher. She has great qualities that would make her a good fit for the job. From what I've heard, you are disapproving my mom to be a substitute teacher because of what she believes. In my seventh grade class, we learned about discrimination. The definition of discrimination is the unfair treatment of people or groups based on their perceived or actual membership in a certain category, such as race, gender, age, religion, or sexual orientation. In the history class, I learned that it's illegal to discriminate against someone. But I guess the laws have changed, and we can discriminate against people who don't have the same belief as ours. I guess now, for some reason, it's okay to discriminate. Now the law under the EEOC says it's illegal to discriminate someone, like, for an applicant or an employee. I just find it confusing on why we all of a sudden think it's all of a sudden okay. Anyways, I hope you guys consider rethinking.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Susanna Rich, followed by John Messer.
Hello, my name is Susanna Rich, and I go to Blacksburg Middle School. I was very excited to see my mom be a sub at my school. I thought that you guys would not think much of it and just approve her because you guys approve other people that you know nothing about and do not even live here, like college students, but don't approve a local mom. I believe you won't approve her just because of her political view. Well, if things were the other way around, how would you feel if you did not get approved to be a sub? Well, the First Amendment guarantees freedom of religion, assembly, expression, and even the right to petition. It does not allow government to restrict a person's religious practices or promote one religion over others. It guarantees freedom of expression by not letting government restrict the rights of individuals to speak freely. You guys went against the freedom of religion by saying that because of my mom's political and Christian beliefs, you will not approve her to be a sub. What did she ever do wrong? I just want my mom to be able to be a sub. My mom would never try to push her religion on others. She would just give the lesson that the teacher she was subbing for gave her. Why won't you let her be a sub? She would be perfect for the job. She doesn't even want the job for the money. She just wants it to serve and be with her kids at school. Would you not want the same thing? I don't understand why you guys have the freedom of religion, but my mom is not allowed to be a sub because of her political and religious views. At school, there is a policy against bullying. Well, you're bullying my mom. Thank you for your time.
Next up is John Messer, followed by Alicia Vaught. Do we have John Messer tonight? Okay. We'll move on to Alicia Vaught, followed by Wendy Pennell.
Good evening, board members. My name's Alicia Vaught. I stand with Lindsay Rich, and I have a few questions I would really like for you guys to answer, but more importantly for the people watching to ponder. Why would you remove Lindsay from the list presented to you in closed session? She obviously met the criteria of the HR department to be a substitute teacher if she made it on the list. Why would you not vote publicly to approve her? It's my understanding that in the past, if a board member didn't agree on one individual on the list, they would be pulled and separately voted on. Why not this time? Where's the transparency? MCPS Policy Section 5-1.1 states that the Montgomery County School Board is an equal opportunity employer committed to no discrimination in recruitment, selection, hiring, pay, promotion, retention, and other personnel action affecting employees or candidates for employment. Two of the protected areas listed are religion and political affiliation. Is it one or both of these reasons? I guess both. Whose idea was it to remove Lindsay from the sub list? What reasons were given to remove Lindsay from the sub list? How many teachers have been removed? And was the vote to remove Lindsay taken in public? And why not? Some stats about the teacher shortages in Virginia. In 2022, there were over 1,000 vacancies for teachers in the state. This year, in 2024, according to data from the J-LARC, which is the Joint Legislative Audit and Recall Commission, in MC, there's 4,304 vacancies for teachers across the state of Virginia. So that number has quadrupled. So you guys definitely need teachers, especially subs. On your own website, out of the 131 job openings, there are at least 40 job openings for teachers, subs, and classroom aides. In your mission statement, in part it reads, "We value diversity, and we are committed to equity and inclusion." Where's the inclusion of Mrs. Rich? How are you valuing diversity when you exclude someone with diversity of thought or point of view? By discriminated against Lindsay, there goes your diversity argument. There goes the inclusion claim. There goes the equity commitment that you claim. So you better change your mission statement because it's simply not true. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaught. Next up is Wendy Pennell, followed by, Ms. Osborne, can I get a time check? Okay, great. Thank you. Next up is Wendy Pennell, followed by Angela Akers. Is Ms. Pennell here? Okay. We'll move on to Angela Akers, followed by Daniel Rich.
Hi, board. Dr. Bragan, Angela Akers of Christiansburg. That's an awesome job, especially that little one. Goes to show what a good mom and teacher she is. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Bragan for acknowledging Constitution Day last meeting. We appreciate that. I'd like to know if the new board members took the oath of office. Because what you have done to Lindsay Rich is unjust and unconstitutional. Board members carry out personal agendas or not well-aligned with our community. I believe a board that serves itself first doesn't lead. From my understanding, MCPS is in dire need of substitute teachers. So what makes a good substitute teacher? They need to be reliable, punctual, prepared, committed to deliver high-quality education, ensures they can earn the respect of both students and staff, and help to make a positive educational experience. Lindsay is an amazing lady with all those qualities, so I don't understand why she was took off the list of substitutes by this board. You need to make this right. I'll stand with Lindsay Rich.
Thank you, Ms. Akers. Next up is Daniel Rich, followed by Elliot McAllister.
So I'm Daniel Rich. You've heard from several of my kids. I've had five kids come through the MCPS schools and very much appreciate everybody who invests in my children. As y'all have heard tonight, my wife did apply for a substitute teaching position, and at the bottom of that application is federal civil rights law. You've heard proportions of it tonight, but specifically, it states that Montgomery County School Board, it's an equal opportunity employer. You're committed to nondiscrimination in your recruitment and hiring. You're prohibited from discriminating for many reasons, both of which include religion and political affiliation. And you're to make your personnel decisions based on merit and ability. So my wife received an interview. She had a background check. She went through her training. That interview and that background check, it ensures that she had merit. That interview and that training, it ensured she had the ability. That interview and that training, it ensured she had the ability. However, she wasn't hired. If your decisions are based on merit and ability, both of which had already been vetted, then why was she not hired? This current school board has approved every substitute teacher that was presented on Personnel Reports this year since you all have taken office this current, uh, so every one. I counted them up, that's 279 substitute teachers if my math was correct. Lindsay Rich is the first one who's gone through the process of being vetted and was not hired. Was it because these other candidates, they've never run for school board in a very closely contested race? Was it that they were not highly vocal about their political and religious opinions? Was it that they didn't have three current school board members who've written public statements on their social media criticizing her or their political and religious opinions? Was it because they didn't have a school board member going out, looking, trying to dig up prior social media posts that are cleanly cut, take it nicely out of context, and have, I have photos on it that were originally sourced from their own social media pages? So surely you can understand why we'd arrive at this conclusion that your denial really has nothing to do with merit and ability and everything to do with her religious and political positions. Surely you can see that there's a subset of you who are highly biased towards my wife. She has already been assured that the board's not discriminating against her, but if so, please communicate to her what your valid reasons are. Let us know why she has no merit or why she fails with ability. Because at the end of the day, the circumstantial evidence seems to be stacking up for a direct purposeful discrimination or at least a personal vendetta to punish a previous political candidate. Thank y'all.
Good, Mr. Rich. Okay. So we can do one more and then we extend, okay? Next up is Elliot McAllister. We have Elliot here. Okay. Then next up is Kelly Stevens. We have Kelly Stevens here. How about Amy Cooper? All right, we got one. Followed by Carol LaHass.
Good evening, Dr. Bragan and school board members. They said everything rises and falls on leadership. I would like to express my deepest concern regarding recent actions the school board made at a meeting a couple of weeks ago that have resulted in defamation against an individual. We talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, and equal opportunities within our schools at MCPS. Firstly, it had come to my attention that defamatory statements have been made against Lindsay Rich and her religion and why she should not be allowed to work in our schools. Her children have all attended MCPS and continue to attend on a daily basis. This is appalling that she was removed from the substitute teachers list approval. Such actions not only harm the reputation and well-being of the individual, but undermines the integrity and trust within our community. I urge the board to address this matter promptly and take appropriate steps to rectify the situation, including issuing a public apology and ensuring that such incidences do not occur in the future. We talk a great game about diversity, equity, and inclusion and equality, but when it comes to somebody in a situation like Lindsay, she's removed off the approval substitute teachers list. Last time I checked, we are an equal opportunity employer in the county, but not in this situation. Someone has some explaining to do. Furthermore, I am troubled by the lack of accountability at times the school board demonstrates. It is imperative that our educational institutions reflect the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Unfortunately, recent policies and practices suggest otherwise as discriminatory hiring practices toward Lindsay Rich. I strongly believe that every person deserves to feel valued and supported, but addressing these issues, the school board can demonstrate its commitment to create a fair and equitable hiring environment for all. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter. I look forward to the prompt response and seeing positive changes within the school board system on how we hire people for MCPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Okay, next up, I need a motion to extend public address by 30 minutes.
移到
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin. Any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitcher?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Brown tree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. Next up is Carol LaHass, followed by Zachary Kemp.
My name is Carol LaHass and I live in Reiner. First, I would just like to offer my condolences to the Eastmont Community colleagues and students for the loss of the teacher in Hurricane Helene. With the expiration of ESER funds last month, the shortfall in funding to rural school districts in Virginia and nationwide will soon become apparent. I'm hoping that the board will consider joining in a national effort to request Congress fully fund the Individuals with Disabilities Education, or IDEA, Act, and support the Keep Our Pact: Promises to America's Children and Teachers Act, as promised when this legislation was passed more than four decades ago. Fully funding Title I and IDEA could mean additional full-time nurses, counselors, and librarians, mental health services for every student, and increased compliance with IEPs. It could also resolve the insufficient staffing for 504 coordinators. Several parents and community members will be reaching out over the next weeks about this effort, and I hope you would agree that keeping the federal commitment to support schools in need is worthwhile. I would also like to comment on the social media outrage that was fomented after the last school board meeting and apparently generated a lot of this public address. Several friends of a political candidate claimed to have personal knowledge of events at a closed meeting and spread a rumor that they and their friend are being persecuted for their religious beliefs. The fact that these rumors from friends were very quickly shared on social media of several state delegates makes it seem like a stunt cooked up at a political meeting. Because a certain party is trying to defund public education and send our tax dollars to private interests, they seem to need to dramatize stories of their personal employment issues in order to motivate their base to the polls. I know many of us, regardless of political affiliation, truly care about our students and teachers and are offended by this unwarranted and politicized assault on the integrity of our school board and school system. If members of the community truly want to support our students and school staff, I hope you will spend time volunteering in our schools or helping to lobby for increased funding rather than attacking the schools and the dedicated members of our school board who stay late hours multiple times per month to serve. I hope members of our community will be motivated to support leaders and elected officials who recognize, as our school board members do, that investing in public education is a priority for the future of our community and our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. Next up is Zachary Kemp, followed by Michelle Harris.
Hello, smile. You're on the school board. That's like the best job ever. My laptop died, so my official comments are dead with it, on it. So here's my thoughts. I am a resident here in Montgomery County. I am someone who came to Virginia Tech proudly to study, stayed here, went here for undergraduate and graduate. I'm a proud product of public schools and I want to say, as a Christian, I am told to honor the governing authorities in Romans 13. And so know how many people in our county are praying for each one of you, each and every day, and I want to thank you for your service. As a proud product of public schools, one of the things that I was taught was intellectual diversity. I have not been to a school board meeting, as you probably get to tell this year, and I kind of questioned during that whole speaking time, what my, what do I have to offer? What do I have to say? And I'd like to represent the future parents tonight. The people who have been here 11 years are sowing roots in this community and love this community and want to raise children at Blacksburg High School. I'm a proud member of the McCoy Community and District E, so thank you, Mr. Roundtree, for your service. I am very concerned whether there are accusations, or whatever they are, against Ms. Rich. Not any, let's just leave to the side everything that's been said for a minute. If we have a shortage of substitute teachers, I would like the county to put out a statement and say what qualifications Ms. Rich did not meet. In the name of unity, I think it would also be really admirable for members of this board to thank their political opponents in future elections for running and the honor that they would have to serve. Because whoever wins, it's an honor that someone would put themselves up to public humiliation. I have seen Ms. Rich's name, this wasn't in my comments, but I'll say it. I'm on Facebook and I have seen her name absolutely tossed through the mud. I've seen comments at what her ambition would be or why she, she must have a secret agenda. You don't know that. I'm a neuroscience major from Virginia Tech, so let's stick to facts. You know that a woman applied for a school board position and the county is asking you why she wasn't approved for that position. In the same way that Romans 13 reminds us that we're to honor the governing authority, right before it in Romans 12, we're told, "Do not do evil for good." If someone treats you evil, I'm actually supposed to respond with kindness. I'm not here to get a YouTube clip. I'm not here to get rage at the board. I'm just here for you to answer a question and I thank you for sort of pouring our community. And I speak on behalf of both District E and the future parents of this community. It is not just the outskirts. It is young adults, it is parents, it is students, it is Virginia Tech students. I have talked to coffee shop workers this week in their twenties who know about what is happening to Ms. Rich. So to think that it is people on the outskirts of our community or a certain demographic or a certain age is also bias. I'm a young adult. I'm very concerned about this and I would love a statement from the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Next up is Michelle Harris, followed by Kimberly Williamson.
Good evening, board members. As you said, my name's Michelle Harris. I'm the parent of three. I am in Montgomery County, live in Christiansburg. My middle child goes to Auburn. I am a licensed professional counselor. I've worked primarily in the field of substance abuse at Mount Regis and Carillion and other places for the past 10 years. I am coming with similar concerns as some others who have voiced them. One of the things we look at in the substance abuse field is, as people are coming into recovery, are their actions and their behaviors aligning with their values? And because it's inherently healthy for us mentally, socially, spiritually, and emotionally to act and behave according to our value system. And as the values that have been referenced tonight, the equity, the inclusion, diversity, and respect, I believe in those very, very much. And I believe that they need to be honored across the spectrum of worldview and belief system. And I have two primary concerns. One, if a person or a small group of people can decide that those values don't apply to particular people, then the values lose their weight. Because then we can decide who actually gets to be included and who actually gets respected or not. And so I believe it can set up a slippery slope of how and when do we apply these values if we don't apply them across the board. And my second concern is just the message to the people in this district who do have similar belief and world, beliefs and worldviews to Lindsay Rich, who want to feel like we have a voice and we have a place. I believe her character and her love for kids does qualify her for the position and I am also asking you to reconsider. I very respectfully thank you for your time and your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next up is Kimberly Williamson, followed by Anna Vajean.
Kimberly Williamson, Christiansburg. First, I too want to say that I believe how this board treated Lindsay Rich's application to be a substitute teacher was underhanded and uncalled for. The yes vote on the Personnel Report from the last school board meeting, which I witnessed, did not indicate that you all had reservations about anyone on that list of applicants, nor did you bring up any individual to vote on separately from that presumed to be comprehensive Personnel Report. I also question the validity of your reservations, as have others. I have known Lindsay for about 16 years. She not only meets your current certification requirements, but as an excellent mother of five children, along with her many volunteer efforts to engage as a parent in MCPS, she would be an excellent substitute teacher choice. I think the way this board handled Lindsay's application was quite cowardly and I ask you to reconsider and do the right thing. On a second topic, a gentleman from the last meeting suggested that you use the Southern Poverty Law Center as a source for defining hate speech. That suggestion is laughable as the SPLC is one of the most hateful, racist, sexist, and bigoted organizations in the country. The SPLC's stated goal is to destroy groups it disagrees with and it is regularly being sued for defamation by many of these nonviolent groups. In 2012, the SPLC's inflammatory rhetoric motivated an attempted mass murder at the headquarters of Family Research Council. Thankfully, that active shooter was stopped before murdering any staff members on site at that time. Family Research Council's supposed crime, simply espousing a biblical definition of family, not a true definition of hate speech by any reasonable standard. In addition, I remember not too long ago reading reports of whistleblowers revealing a pervasive culture of racism and sexism within the internal employee structure in direct opposition to their public-facing side. The SPLC is not an organization that should ever be taken seriously to define hate speech. So why don't we go back to the Bible for a basis of conduct in the schools? Such as in, "In everything you do, be careful to treat others in the same way you'd want them to treat you." Or, "If you remember that someone is angry with you, make peace with that person." I believe we would all be better off if we simply went back to the original moral foundation that informed our constitution and our education system rather than trying to reinvent the wheel.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson. Next up is Anna Vajean, followed by Christopher Thomas.
Hi, my name is Anna Vajean and I live in District A. I have one child who just started sixth grade at BMS and he is having a fantastic year. So I want to thank all of you for that. I've been watching your meetings on YouTube and I appreciate all of you for working so well together this year to make difficult decisions and look out for the children under your care. I also want to defend you, the school board members, against the accusations related to Ms. Rich's substitute position. Some are saying that Ms. Rich was removed from the substitute list simply because of her politics or religion or even because of some plot of revenge spearheaded by her opponent in the school board race. This is all supposition and based on hearsay. If indeed Ms. Rich was removed from the substitute list, there are multiple reasons why this could have occurred. One reason I can think of is that you, the board, could have determined that she was not in compliance with Policy 5-1.6. And for those who don't know, 5-1.6 states in part that "An employee's use of personal social media may not disrupt the work-school environment, impair their ability to perform their MCPS duties effectively, and/or compromise working relationships within MCPS schools and offices." In any case, nobody other than you really knows why Ms. Rich did not appear on that approved substitute list. Only you, the board members, who are in that closed meeting and the other, maybe a couple of people, really know the truth. And of course, none of you are able to discuss this information. None of you are at liberty to disclose any information about personnel decisions. So you cannot defend yourselves against the accusations that are being made. So I feel for you for that. I also want to point out to those who are skeptical that the Personnel Report of September 17th was approved by both conservative-leaning and liberal-leaning members of the board. And so political or religious viewpoint is a pretty far-fetched explanation for Ms. Rich's removal from the sub list, to me. I'd like to end on a little bit more of a personal note. Some of the attacks online have targeted Mr. Roundtree as the purported ringleader of Ms. Rich's removal. I have known Mr. Roundtree for many years and I know him to be consistently reasoned and fair in his decision-making. His strong moral compass would not allow him to act in the way that some commenters have accused him of acting. I sincerely hope that the attacks on you will stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jane. Next up is Christopher Thomas, followed by Betty Thomas.
Members of the board, all the way back in 1877, a jurist you've never heard of named Horace Gray Wood wrote a treatise entitled Horace Gray Wood wrote a treatise entitled "Master and Servant." Wood stitched together four spurious cases to upend U.S. labor law, asserting that unless otherwise specified in a contract, the burden of proof for any employer-employee relationship lies with the employee to prove any term or running condition of employment. Did you catch all that? Old Horace more or less invented the concept of at-will employment out of whole cloth. It was snapped up by various Gilded Age business-friendly courts across the country, and over the next seventy-five years or so gradually became the de facto standard for employment in the United States. For those of you not condemned to wallow in U.S. labor policy, at-will employment is what enables your employer to fire you at any time or any reason. In an at-will state like Virginia, it is on you, the employee, to prove, not allege, prove that your firing was inappropriate. At-will employment is one of the most enduring policy victories of the American business-conservative movement, and so I find it utterly perplexing that so many of my friends on the right here have chosen to roll out tonight in opposition to it. Again, make no mistake, that is the position they're taking. Indeed, they're taking that opposition to at-will employment further than any of its union-loving, ultra-left-wing critics ever have. They're arguing that not only does an employer not enjoy a presumption of innocence when dismissing an employee, they have an obligation to hire someone if they cannot prove a reason in advance to fire them for cause. Really think about the absurdity of that position. Ms. Bond, if I walked into your salon and asked for a job tomorrow, are you required to hire me? Of course not. Ms. Parton, if I walk into your husband's office tomorrow, wearing an "all cops are bad" t-shirt, and ask him for a job, is he required to look past my politics and hire me? Of course not. You can't answer, but I don't think you need to. The very idea is absurd, but I would look good in a uniform. As I understand it, Ms. Rich applied to be a substitute teacher at MCPS, and she was rejected from the position. The board has no obligation to hire anyone at any position, does not owe anyone an explanation as to why they weren't hired, and Ms. Rich's politics do not single her out as special or deserving of extraordinary consideration. These are not loony left ideals; they are the bedrock of conservative political values for past hundred-and-fifty years. And frankly, I marvel at how fast my friends on the right here flee from their so-called values when they become even slightly inconvenient to their ongoing need to cast themselves as a victim. I will close with one last observation. With the exception of Ms. Franklin, who always abstains from the personnel report for her own mysterious reasons, this report was passed unanimously, and I refuse to believe the conservative wing of this board to be so cowardly as to vote in favor of a report tainted by the kind of political discrimination and petty ideological bigotry my friends on the right have asserted here tonight. Their vote is all the evidence any of us should need that this board had good reason to reject Ms. Rich's application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Next up is Betty Thomas.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Betty Thomas, and I live in Christiansburg. Over the evening, I have heard multiple people come up here and talked about how qualified Lindsay Rich is to be a substitute teacher. May I remind you how Lindsay Rich attacked several people during the campaign, myself included? She drew me, my family, through the mud countless times simply because I am a hardcore transactivist. She had said several times that she would not protect many of the kids in your school system simply because their gender identity. I agree with the decision you made to keep Lindsay Rich from being a substitute teacher, as her being in the building can make your students feel uncomfortable and scared. Students should feel safe in their schools. They should not be afraid of their teachers or substitute teachers. What you did is the right thing, so stick to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Betty Thomas. And with that, public address is closed. All right. Next up, if no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved. Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitchin?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, and that brings us to our business meeting. And first up is the report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. I only have a few things to report on. One is, I spoke to the county today, and the boil water requirement is still going to be in effect most likely to the end of the week. So I want everyone to know that the schools have taken action, and we've secured water for the staff and students in all the buildings bottled water. And we're planning on having that in full supply, at least until the end of the week. And if at the end of the week we find that it's going to go longer, we'll take care of that as well. So rest assured, we will have water that's potable and ready for everyone to drink in all of our buildings. If for any reason someone feels that they don't have access or something, please contact the building principal and/or myself right away. But we do have it, and we plan for it, so it should be there. Unfortunately, today's meet and greet with the superintendent was in Christiansburg Starbucks, and because they don't have water, they weren't open. So we have to reschedule that one, so I apologize if anybody showed up or went down there, but it was closed. So we will reschedule that as soon as we can find a convenient time. Our next meet and greet with the superintendent is scheduled for the Shawsville community at the library, and that's next Monday at 9:30 a.m. If anybody can make it, I would really appreciate it. I love to talk to our community members, hear some feedback, and get some ideas on how we could do things more efficiently and maybe better for our community. And lastly, Chair Hudson touched on this a little bit, but I just want to compliment our entire community for coming together to get through this recent storm and the devastating impact it's had on the community, and specifically on the eastern Montgomery community, where we lost a beloved and dedicated staff member. There's really not words to express that kind of loss that we feel. And, you know, I got daughters that age, so I can't imagine what the family's going through. But one thing I did know, and I do know, and I know it from this community, and I know it from the community down in Eastmont, we're just doing our best because we're going to get to it together, and it's a united community, and I'm really blessed to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. All right, next up, Mr. David Hurd, our principal at Auburn High School, will share a presentation on vaping. He will be joined by Marty Graham and Dee Frith.
Ms. Osborne, Dr. Bragan, members of the board, student representatives. I'm joined, as you said, by Marty Graham, who is serving as a community advocate on this issue, as well as Ms. Frith, who represents New River Community Services. So I entitled this presentation "Vape Detectors and Their Effectiveness," and the more I've thought about it, I'm not even sure that that is adequate to cover everything, because we have installed vape detectors at our school, starting at the beginning of the school year. It was reported to us multiple times by students that they didn't feel comfortable going to the restroom, because there were students who were vaping in the restroom, and they didn't want to be a part of it. They didn't want to be accused of it. They didn't want to be around it. So that has become an issue. So why address this issue? Just a couple of things. E-cigarettes are the most frequently used tobacco products among MCPS students and across the state and the nation. Nicotine exposure during adolescence can increase the risk for future addiction and to other drugs. And just simply vaping in schools presents a disciplinary health and safety issue, and this was why we addressed this. So Ms. Graham will address the slide.
In the spring of 2024, an anonymous survey was conducted by EO. That's Endless Opportunity Now, which is formerly the United Way of Southwest Virginia. And they've been conducting this survey for many years. Not every year, but they have been consistently doing this survey. And so they gave it to MCPS students in seventh, ninth, and eleventh graders. I would like to direct everyone's attention to the far-right green bar, the dark green. As you can see, that of the students who reported using vape devices in the past thirty days, forty percent of eleventh graders are using them daily. Twenty-five percent of ninth graders and twenty percent of seventh graders are all using them daily.
So with this pervasive use and with this common use, this led us to pilot a program that was started with vape detection, and actually evolved into some other things that I'll touch on in a second, with some alternative to suspension, as well as some counseling that was integrated as part of this program. But Prevention and Awareness Campaign displayed on AHS digital screens. Images were developed and shared by a prevention coalition in the Roanoke Valley, partnered with Salem High School students, to design the messaging. I'll show you that. It's a guinea pig that represents "don't be a guinea pig for the vape companies." I know, I believe Mallory could attest that she's seen that on our screens throughout the school quite a bit. We have installed vape detection in all public restrooms, so we have one in all eight of our public restrooms. We have them in both locker room restrooms and all our other restrooms. We also have devised an alternative to suspension. We are using in-school suspension as a result for this. Now, this is for the nicotine vapes. This is not for THC or some things along those lines that violate the drug policy. And also promotion of quit vaping resources with students. And here's the example of our "don't be a guinea pig for the vaping companies." So this is what they look like. Located in all eight restrooms, accessible to students during the school day, these devices are monitored by AHS administration. I have almost worn out a pair of shoes going back and forth from time to time, and they're supplied by the company ZepTiv. I've linked that in the presentation, so if you need more information, I cannot explain capably the technology that they use. But with that said, how they work, I mean, these devices can quickly identify vaping chemicals, and they provide real-time alerts to administrators. We started out keeping them silent and realized pretty quickly that that limited their effectiveness, because our goal is not to simply catch students and for them to get in trouble. We're trying to help students. So they have an audible tone, so we set the audible tone, and that really seemed to cut down the usage in our restroom. People didn't want to be in there when the audible tone has gone off. And then the school administration responded to the alerts. So the first part was family notification, and I've linked in there the letter that was sent home or was sent through email at least to our parents. So the way this works is, students found to be in possession of a vape or to trigger a vape detector will receive ISS for two days and receive an online information program about healthy choices through the Our Healthy Futures online program. This is conducted in a supervised environment, that supervised environment is in-school suspension. Students meet with their school counselor on the first offense as well. Student is provided with a card with information about quitting. Second-time offenders are referred to in-person counseling for cessation, and I'll ask Ms. Frith to share some information about that with you.
Okay, so I was lucky enough to go in yesterday for the first time and met with a student. So during the second offense, it will involve the student attending our Healthy Futures program facilitated by me at the school. This will be four hours spread out in two weeks, just two days like on Monday, two days the following Monday. And what I really liked about it is it was no shaming. It was really just straightforward, good information. All normal steps taken for discipline issues will be applied in both scenarios. Administrators, contact parent guardian, guidance counselor, and the NRVCS counselor, if they have one. But we talked about different skills for quitting, a lot of science on the brain, which was, you know, it's really good information. My Healthy Futures has an interactive video game format and addresses the most relevant issues related to teen vaping. The program provides activities and materials using the principles of motivational interviewing and cognitive behavioral therapy to help students understand the harms of e-cigarettes and other tobacco products. It also helps students identify alternate ways to cope with stress and equips them with resources to help them quit vaping. We all have a role in protecting youth from the harms of vaping, and we're honored to be partners with AHS and AMS. Our goal is to certainly decrease vaping infractions at school, but also to effectively reach students with supports and services that would help them and their vaping use for good. We are delighted to have other collaborating partners in this work, New River Health District and the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth, both of whom are committed to helping to prevent tobacco and substance use among our young people. Collectively, we are partners with you in helping, excuse me, all students prepare for a bright future free from addiction. Thank you.
So just a little data from the first two weeks of school. I felt that it was important to, I wasn't sure these were going to be ready and onboard the first day of school, so I delayed communicating to students, because once they were installed on August 13th, before students were informed, we got 27 alerts, the vape detections in the restrooms. I met with the students. I met with juniors and seniors the first day, and then freshmen and sophomores the next day on the 14th and 15th, to let everybody know that this is what's going on, this is what's going to happen. Then, as you can see, once students were informed, the alerts went down. They went to 12, to 10, to eight. Somewhere around the 19th, maybe on the 16th, we turned on the audible tone, and then we got a lot fewer. We got a lot fewer results. We had three on the 19th, zero on the 20th, 21st, then the 22nd and 23rd, we had four and one. I mean, we did see about a nine-to-one ratio in the girls versus the boys restroom for these first two weeks, the first two weeks of school. Admittedly, we have had a couple of technical issues that were getting worked out at this point, so that's actually going, I feel like we're headed in the right direction there. Just a couple of notes and observations. I mean, we made two changes this year. One was to install the vape detectors. One was to decrease passage time between classes from five minutes to four, and I believe that's been a success. But I mentioned that to mention the fact that we're having, anecdotally, I can say, I have fewer students gathering in the restroom. I can't quantify that. I can't tell you how many were before and how many are now, but I can just tell you through my observations, they're not hanging out at the same rate. Did a survey the other day, and about sixty percent of our 10th to 12th grade students responded to a survey that they've seen less vaping in the restrooms. I did a separate survey for freshmen, and I had, I believe there were two responses throughout that, when I gave them a chance to free respond, said that I haven't seen anybody in the restrooms with vaping in the restrooms. So we have some pretty good data, I think, to this point, that suggests that this has been successful. We have some bugs to work out. We have some things to get better, but at the same time, we have had some success with this program. I would also like to thank the people on this slide, the groups on the slide, that have worked together for this, depending on which element of this pilot. Thank you all very much, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, Ms. Graham, Ms. Frith, I think for coming out tonight and for all your hard work on this. I guess I'd like to, before opening it up to the board, I'd love to hear from a student who maybe has been in that building during this period. Not to put you on the spot, Mallory, but if you have any comments, I'd love to hear it.
I would love to share. Okay, so since I've started at Auburn High School, ninth grade year, throughout my 12th grade year, with these being installed, and the nine-to-one ratio, they're from like ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. Every single year, I'd get off the bus, and I'd come into the school, and I'd go to the bathroom, because I had a long bus ride, and there was clumps of girls just in the corner of the bathroom in like the big stall, and they were vaping, obviously, but no one really ever told anybody about it, because they were scared to be the snitch. And I was very scared to be the snitch as well. So I've never participated in anything that they were doing, but the smell was very much overwhelming, and it bothered me and along all my other peers. And like, I've recently talked to them since the detectors have been installed, and they have felt a lot more comfortable to be able to go to the restroom, and they don't feel the need to have to wait till they get home to go to the bathroom, because there's not students crammed inside of the bathroom. If you were to go into the bathroom during a passing period, there is maybe just a few students that are like in the bathroom, actually using the bathroom, but in the previous years, there has been just clumps of them that would just pile inside of there. And... just pile inside of there. And, I mean, I think it's worked overall, and ever since the students found out about the detectors, then they were more scared and they quit doing it. So there isn't been the big problem anymore, and everybody's more comfortable, and they feel like going to the restroom, they can actually go, and they don't have to worry about inhaling any of the chemicals.
That's great. Thank you, Mallory. Appreciate it. All right, board, let's open it up for any questions. You want to start?
So, did you want to start?
I was just going to say, so how can we get them in all the bathrooms in every school? Because I truly believe and have for years that we've got lots of issues, and that's just one of them. And, you know, as people hear me say all the time, we need to get our head out of the sand, which is the truth, and I hope that we finally are because there's bigger issues than just this, but got to start somewhere. So I appreciate and applaud Auburn for stepping up and being the guinea pig, so to speak, to do it. And it doesn't mean that kids are quitting, but maybe it's making them think about the seriousness of that and going into something else that's far much worse that we want to stop. We want to stop before kids lose their life. And we've had lots of kids in our county lose their life to drugs. So I'm all about it, all for it, and I want to see it in every school and every bathroom, and my two cents.
And to that point, last night, we had a meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and I requested that they listen in to your presentation today on this. They have $6 million of unallocated funds that were unexpected revenue, and that, I imagine, will plenty cover vape detection in all of our bathrooms across the county. So we should definitely go to the Board of Supervisors and ask for those extra funds to cover this and get vaping out of our schools. Thank you all for the presentation, too.
So I absolutely agree with what other board members have just said. The tone, so is this really loud? Does it radiate throughout the building? How's this?
It does not go throughout the building, but you can certainly hear it outside. It's probably similar to that of a smoke alarm in your house. It was, it was really dependent. I wonder if initially there was some questions if these things work. And I think, I think it was actually on Dr. Bregan's suggestion, we turned the tone on because my, you know, we're, it's still somewhat dependent on us being, I mean, the alert hits my phone, and I see it, and then I get there, and then we, you know, that facilitates or, you know, prompts a conversation for sure. But the tone really seemed to, it kind of let everybody know that it was, this is real, you know, that this actually does, hey, this does set that off. Before, if I didn't get there and nobody ever found out, then, you know, there was not, that conversation didn't happen much.
So how's it turned off?
I can do it on my phone. I can do it remotely.
But not till you get there.
Yeah. Well, oh, how's it turn, no, it times out. It times out. Once the vapor dissipates enough, I guess. But it just gives, or maybe it's even just a burst of, I don't know, 15 seconds, 10 seconds of a tone.
Thank you.
Ms. Pissot?
Thank you so much, Mr. Hurd, for this presentation, and also just all the extra work that went into coordinating this, and I'm glad that it's had a positive effect at your school. I more have things to share and maybe questions for the board than for Mr. Hurd. I had a long conversation with Dr. Johnson last Friday. That covered all kinds of things, but because in anticipation of this presentation, I asked him, what's the, what was his sense of the vaping issues at BMS, the biggest middle school in southwest Virginia? And he seemed to think that things were getting better. One was because of the cell phone policy that limited students' ability to coordinate and go vape together. He also thought just some other low-tech decisions that BMS had made, like not using an e-hall pass, but kind of old-school passes to go to the bathroom is also helping because students had kind of figured out how to game that system. Some of them are sharing this just as multiple tools to deal with this issue. I'm really concerned with vapes as a public health issue, and I hope that we can find ways to positively apply discipline so that going to the bathroom, a basic biological function is a safe procedure for all of our students. I would like the board to consider supporting the development of a formal task force to study this at all of our schools, like Ms. Bond had suggested, and just to continue advocating, continue their advocacy and their research. I would also like the board to consider developing state and legislative priorities for our representatives in Richmond and Washington. And this connects to what Dr. Roundtree mentioned before, our discussion with local political leaders last night at our joint meeting. The towns and the county really can't do very much to restrict sales, but the state can. And I believe that the federal government really needs to have more regulation about what's in these things and how they're sold, and they get all this gunk when they're reused, and like that's, like there are so many gross things about vapes that I, that are really overwhelming. So having some kind of unified voice to reach out to our delegates, our state senators, as well as our congresspeople and federal representatives, I think, would be wise. It would also be a way to do things like advocate for fully funding our schools through, like the suggestions from the JLRK study, and just other things, other concerns that we have about public education. So that's my, so thank you again, Mr. Hurd.
Ms. Parton?
So not to sound redundant, but I will say that I agree wholeheartedly with what all of my board members are stating. This has been an issue for a long time. It's just now gotten to a point to where it's gotten so bad because, I don't want to say we've let it go, but we've let it go, basically. I wish we had started working on this sooner. I know that I had mentioned to the previous superintendent years ago that I wanted vape detectors in the bathroom. And the main reason I brought this to his attention and the board's attention at that time was because I did have a daughter in the school system who told me that she didn't like going to the bathroom because of what she had to deal with, and that's what people were in there doing. They weren't in there doing what you go to the bathroom to go do specifically, but they were in there vaping. And she told me, Mom, it's worse than you think. It's not a lot of kids. It's basically the whole school. And the people who don't do it is a minority in the schools. So from that point forward, I started realizing, hey, we need to try to start getting this under control. Unfortunately, we don't have the staff to monitor the bathrooms in the school at the time, nor did we have the funds to try to get the alarms in the schools at the time, too. I think we were looking at doing that individually as we could, which I'm glad we finally have them in Auburn, and I do see it's making a huge difference, like I knew it would. Another issue, if we don't grasp this soon, as Ms. Bond has pointed out, that's not going to be, that's not going to be our biggest issue. Our biggest issue is how this correlates with bigger and more horrible drug usage that our students are using. They're putting in the vape, and they're not aware of what it's in it, if it's been laced with anything, and it's causing other major issues other than just the vaping part. So really, it starts with the vaping, but it really, it expands into a much bigger picture. So we've got a huge problem, and we've got a drug problem, is what we've got, because that initiates the drug usage, in my opinion, and from what I've seen. So, yeah, I have actually been in touch with my delegate and legislatures. I'm also sitting on a board in Richmond that just had a presentation about vape usage and how the communities surrounding us and some in our community are getting away with selling it to minors, and that's a huge issue. So as we heard last night, our hands are tied on a lot of that. So we do need to make it a point to reach out to legislatures. Maybe we need to ask them to come to some of our meetings. Maybe we need to think about taking a field trip to Richmond and having a lobbying day for what we're discussing. I would do that in a heartbeat. But we need to, we need to realize and grasp, and parents, you need to know what's going on with your kids. You need to know your kids are doing it, and you need to be aware of what you're doing because if the kids see you doing it, they're more than likely going to do it. Sit down, talk with them, tell them how horrible it is. They look to you. It has to start with you. We need your help on this because we can't do it by ourselves. So thank you so much for this presentation, Marty. Good to see you again. Thank you for your information, and you as well, and thank you for all the counseling and help that you're going to provide. But we have got to start making more, and I don't want to say maybe we need to discipline is the answer, but I talked to these kids till I'm blue in the face at some of these student hearings, and I think some of them understand and other ones don't, they don't get it, how serious this can be and how potentially life-threatening it could be. So we need to figure out a way to let them, let them know how serious this is.
And I'm under no illusion that what we've done has eradicated vaping at Auburn High School. I don't, I don't think that's the case. I think there's probably more that get past us than we find. I'm certain there are. But we've at least made the restroom a place where people have to think twice about.
Yeah, because I don't want our kids not being able to go to the restroom because they're afraid they're going to get seen with someone doing it, or they're going to get caught, or they're going to get, you know, we want all of our kids to feel safe no matter where they go in the school for any reason. So we've got to figure out a way to fix it. So thank you, and this is definitely a start. So appreciate it.
Dr. Gettrich?
Thank you as well for the presentation from the three of you. So I also know of students who don't go to the bathroom at all because they're afraid, and this is happening in other buildings. And what that means, that there are students in our buildings and MCPS who might be going eight and a half or nine hours without using a restroom. So I guess my question, there seems to be consensus on the board, is how quickly can you get these into all of the schools, particularly in the high schools, but the middle schools and high schools?
If that's the consensus of the board, I think we can do it pretty quickly.
Okay.
The idea was to pilot it this year with one of our smaller high schools, and Mr. Hurd stepped forward and volunteered to do that. We did a smaller pilot in Montgomery Central in the summer, smaller school, less children there, had the same effect over a short period of time, is more of a deterrent to stop it from being used in the bathroom. That, Montgomery Central's a bit of a different environment, so we tried it at a larger school. But if that's what the board wants, we'll try to do it as quickly as I can.
I think we should decide this.
Can we get a raise up? A show of hands, who wants to pursue thoughts?
Like tomorrow.
I'm not a math guy, but that was close to majority, right?
I'm pretty sure, pretty sure.
We'll get on.
Thank you for suggesting that because that's where we need to go. But we also need to do a prevention part. We also need to do an education part at the elementary school level. And that, you know, we know that we have children starting in third, fourth grade. We have proof of that. So that education has to start early. There are SOLs that can be incorporated in the health part of elementary school. There are certainly things like Red Ribbon Week. We used to do that. That talks a lot about substance abuse and educates students. Because Ms. Parton is right, it, once they start vaping, the rest comes because they've been so addicted that abuse of any kind of a substance will happen. The data shows that. So we can't forget that part. I just wanted to add that in. Can't forget our elementary schools.
Okay.
Not detectors, but education.
May I add something else? Okay, so for the prevention part about what she was saying, as you know, I'm a teenager. So growing up, I have, from fifth grade, we did Dare. We all pledged to be drug-free. Well, that fell off in middle school, and that's whenever the big problems started. And throughout the years, everybody has glamorized it and normalized it. And that's part of where like the big problem is, is peer pressure as well, and just lots of, more people are more susceptible to be able to give into the peer pressure because they think, oh, it's just one time. But like, we've had many people speak to us about vaping and the bad things about it, but it just never really done like a big effect on anybody. So I don't know if there's any way to be able to, be able to educate people so they'll actually like understand and listen, but I just know lots of it just starts with peer pressure.
Sure. Dr. Gettrich, did you have any other questions? We kind of preempted your comment there with a.
No, that's fine. So I agree that this is just one component. When you introduced this at Auburn, were you using, so aside from the devices, a particular program, because I know that you've built in not just discipline, but the education, was that a program that already existed and that you adopted, or did you develop yourself? Because, for instance, with the gun, I'm thinking about the gun safety program that we were able to very quickly adopt because one already existed and we were able to tailor it to MCPS. So my question to you is, is that possible in the situation where there is a program that addresses the education component that we can use as a basis to do things in tandem here?
As far as the education component, um, do you, yes?
So Our Healthy Futures is one of many. There's like the Truth Initiative that has a lot of curriculum, but the data is more robust with Our Healthy Futures and how it is really making a difference. And that is, comes out of the Virginia Foundation of Healthy Youth, and it is very well-rounded. So for the ISS part, the first offense, the students do a interactive curriculum. And one of the guidance counselors at the high school actually said, one of the, you know, because they have to connect with the guidance counselor as part of this, the kids, the specifically girls, were really liking it and learned a lot from it, and said they learned things they didn't know was an issue with vaping. And then, of course, the program that Dee is currently working with them on now is a more robust. It's how many hours?
It's two hours, two weeks, so four hours.
Four hours total. And that, that is individual. That is not interactive. That's not sitting in ISS. That's, you know, meeting with her, having discussions, you know, because the support needs to be holistic. A lot of times, our students, much like Mallory mentioned, turn to substances because of peer pressure, because of not being part of a group, being an outcast, not being in sports, not being in the MAC group. Any of that can be a reason for them to be attracted to it. So that's what's nice about Our Healthy Futures, is that it does have that first interactive piece to it, but then it has the one-on-one. Or, let's say we had three students that got to the second offense, then Dee would meet with all three of those because it helps them build a community so that if they move to cessation, they can support each other. So, does that answer your question on that?
Yeah, I don't know if that's something that, if there is a task force that is put together, can use, can work with to help implement, because I know that would take time and resources to do that.
Right. And it is part of NRVCS's mission to help the schools with substance abuse. So that's why we started there, because they already have experience with it. To scale that up. To scale that up, you're right, we would have to think a bit differently about how that would look, because they don't have enough staff to do that. Not that we can't find people, we've certainly done it many times, so, but that's a good point. It's a good point.
Marina, just to ask if you have a perspective you'd like to share from BHS?
I agree with Mallory that it's a lot like peer pressure. I feel like it would have a similar effect for us as like the cell phone policy, because I feel like the cell phone policy at first, people were like, oh, they're not taking it seriously. But then like, it honestly like made a difference, and it did help. I feel like that would be a similar mindset if this were to like happen. Yeah, but also there is a lot of like peer pressure, and I feel like it kind of is something that's kind of gone like, kind of like forgotten, not as like focused on, with like a lot of other issues happening.
Okay. I guess Mr. Heard, the million-dollar question for me, and you kind of touched on this earlier, but, so clearly this has made an impact in bathrooms. Did we just move the problem somewhere else? Like, is it now happening in the locker rooms or the hallways or the cafeterias? Or do we have any way to know?
I don't have any way to know. I mean, I'm not going to lie to you, probably. I suspect what we're talking about, I mean, if we go back to this one particular slide that Ms. Graham talked about, I mean, of the students who use, 40% of 11th graders do it daily. These are students who are addicted, and these students aren't going six hours without vaping somewhere. So yes, I suspect we've moved it. That said, that said, we have to create an environment where people feel safe.
Sure.
You know, our students who don't vape need to feel like they can go to the restroom. I don't think we've eradicated it in the restroom. I think students are probably resourceful enough to find ways. I mean, I am certain of that, but I can anecdotally say it's not happening as often. There aren't as many people in the restroom. It's not a gathering place like it was before.
Good, yeah. Definitely appreciate the improvement in the bathrooms. I mean, we've had firsthand evidence of how that was like beforehand, right? So that's a great first step. I definitely agree with the suggestion of a task force or continuing education, right? This is one piece of a bigger puzzle, but it's a great first step, for sure.
Not to put you girls back on the spot again, but I've kind of always believed that having three kids come through Christiansburg, sometimes I think young adults, this is my own opinion, maybe don't hear or listen from adults, but maybe hear or listen from young adults that have suffered from drug abuse and have overcome it. What are your thoughts on that? Do you feel like that resonates more than coming from adults? Because I think sometimes young people tend to want, they don't have a clue, they don't know, they don't live in my shoes, they don't work, they don't, do you agree with me on that, or no? Or you can say, hey, you're crazy.
I think, personally, I think from what I've seen, there has been kids that will just brush off anything that anybody has ever told them. But then there are other kids who have seen the effects on people their own age, like through social media, especially on TikTok. People have shared their stories and you can see what they've gone through. That's helped me understand a lot, and I can help my friends out and give them information. And I know from like my whole life, I've always heard from adults, like, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this, that's bad for you. And I've always been the type to listen and know, like, if someone's telling me something, I should probably like listen to them. But I know from like my peers, I feel like they probably relate more to someone their own age that has gone through something than versus like an adult that's trying to pressure that on to them.
Okay, great. Thanks. We got a lot of great ideas and energy around this. Certainly sounds like continued rollout of these detectors in addition to more concentrated effort around, call it a task force or something, around education, around additional efforts in this to keep this ball rolling, I think is a good next step. Any other questions or comments, board, before we move on? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
All of you. Thanks for our students, perhaps for really getting in on this conversation, and it's your first meeting, great job. All right, next up, where am I? Next up, Dr. Barbara Wickham, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, will share a presentation on assessment results.
The purpose of tonight's presentation is to discuss accredited schools' SOL testing data from 2324, share VDOE data analysis and compare it to MCPS, show some growth data, discuss focus areas for improving student achievement, and share some information about the revised accountability system. State accreditation for the current year is determined by testing that happened last year. It includes academic benchmarks in English, Math, and Science, chronic absenteeism, and for high schools, graduation and completion index, dropout rates, and college career and civic readiness. All 19 Montgomery County schools will be accredited, three accredited with conditions, and six of our schools have all Level One school quality indicators compared to three last year. Reading and math state accreditation scores include growth for elementary and middle schools. So some state accreditation celebrations for us, 11 out of 18 tested schools increased their scores in reading, 12 out of 18 tested schools increased their scores in math, and 13 out of 18 increased science scores. These reporting groups showed increased accreditation scores in both reading and math, Asian, economically disadvantaged, multiple races, and white, and Black students showed a nine-point increase in math accreditation scores, which is the largest amount of growth for any group of For chronic absenteeism, our principals and staff worked incredibly hard to decrease chronic absenteeism, including letters, phone calls, home visits. Chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% or more of the academic year for any reason, any reason including excused absences, unexcused absences, and suspensions. Elementary students are continuing to show a great deal of growth in reading and in math when you compare accreditation scores, again, which includes growth, to raw pass rates. So these are the elementary reading scores, the raw pass rate comparison to the rate that includes growth. And these are the elementary math scores, again, comparing the raw pass rate to the accreditation rates that include growth. Our next slide, we'll begin looking at the performance of our student groups. This slide shows the number of students and the percent of population for student groups in MCPS. The student group of multiple races or students who identify as being of more than one race was added a few years ago as a major reporting category in Virginia. When families complete their student registration process, they're asked to select their race. Selecting more than one race, such as American Indian and Asian, for example, would then put that student into the multiple race category. This graph shows our raw reading SOL pass rates for all students over the past few years as compared to the average for the state. You can see that while our raw pass rates are higher than the state average, we have not returned to pre-COVID scores. However, proficiency cut scores were lowered between 1819 and the 2021 test administration for multiple subjects, which means that a pass in 1819 wasn't necessarily a pass in 2020 and beyond. So you can't really compare. This graph shows our reading SOL pass rates for Asian students in MCPS compared to the state average. So as you're comparing these, MCPS is in the lighter blue, the first bar, and you can see that our Asian student scores continue to be higher than the state average. This graph shows our reading SOL pass rates for our Black students in MCPS, which is lower than the state average. Our pass rates for multiple race students is also lower than the state average. Our pass rate for Hispanic students continues to be higher than the state average. The reading scores of white students in MCPS is below the state average. The pass rates of students with disabilities in MCPS is also below the state average. The performance of economically disadvantaged students in MCPS is right at the state average, just a point below. The performance of English learners in MCPS is above the state average in reading. Switching over to math, this graph shows our math SOL raw pass rates for all students over the past few years as compared to the state average, and math SOL scores in MCPS are higher than the state average for the pass rates. Math scores for Asian students in MCPS are higher than the state average. Math scores for Black students in MCPS are lower than the state average. Math scores for students who are multiple race are lower than the state average. Scores for our Hispanic students in MCPS continue to be higher than the state average. Math scores for white students in MCPS, below the state average. Our scores for our students with disabilities in math, below the state average. Math scores for economically disadvantaged in math is just above the state average. And math scores for our English learners, again, well above the state average. These are our science pass rates, which continue to be above the state average. So again, our chronic absenteeism, our absence rates went down this year. Our on-time graduation rates for each of our high schools continue to be strong. Additionally, 57.9% of our students earn advanced diplomas compared to the state average of just 51%. Our four-year Virginia on-time graduation rate is 95.2% compared to the state average of 92.8%. The VDOE, when releasing some preliminary data, also released some key findings regarding last year's testing. These apply to high schools. In comparison, our math, reading, and science pass rates at the high school level were all higher than the state averages. Our chronic absenteeism rate is lower than the state average, with 17 out of 19 of our schools showing improvement in attendance. And again, I can't say enough how hard our staff worked trying everything they could think of to get children to come to school this past year. Significant improvements were demonstrated in elementary science SOL pass rates. For the 2324 school year, all MCPS elementary schools had pass rates above the benchmark of 70%. The four schools that were previously below the state benchmark showed an average improvement of 15.4% in science pass rates. Science scores improved also in three of our four middle schools. Our English learners continue to show strong growth, and our pre-K classroom assessment scoring data shows that our teachers outperform the state average in all domains. So our next steps. We know that students rise to our expectations. Wherever disproportionality exists, it must be eliminated if we're going to ensure that every single child is successful. As a school system as a whole, we have to hold ourselves and others accountable to show that we're willing to take responsibility for missteps and not just our successes. We will hold monthly check-ins with our principals to monitor student progress and ensure that schools have specific measurable goals for any struggling students that can be monitored and strategies that can be revised as needed. We know that research tells us again and again, any student that's not reading on grade level at the end of third grade will likely struggle for the rest of their school career. So we will continue to provide training to ensure that students receive core literacy instruction, that's based on the science of how children learn to read. We'll ensure that student grades accurately measure a student's understanding of the material and really focus on mastery learning, and increase student engagement in the classroom. Bottom line, learning should be fun when we walk into our classrooms. It should be a fun place. During the 2324 school year, part of our day-long curriculum team meetings was spent analyzing new standards. We have new standards in math, we have new standards in language arts. We use the new standards to revise our pacing guides and our curriculum organization for this school year. During this past summer, teams of teachers and coaches met to begin updating all of our curriculum resources. Curriculum team meetings this year will have dedicated time to address the rigor of the new standards, will continue to update curriculum materials, and we hope to convene textbook adoption committees early next semester, if of course, the VDOE stays on time with an approved list of instructional materials. Also this school year, our middle schools are offering two science pathways to maximize student success. On one path, students may compact middle school science curriculum into two years and then take Earth Science in eighth grade, and the other path allows students to dive more deeply into the middle school science content, taking the full three years to learn the middle school science curriculum, which is what is outlined by the state. So our children, our students, every child, every day, whatever it takes, we have to act with that sense of urgency. We'll implement strategies to help students develop skills they need to be successful, such as executive functioning skills and self-regulation skills, those skills that enable us to plan and to focus our attention and to juggle multiple tasks, to be organized. Dr. Walker, our Special Education Director, spoke with you a few weeks ago about the work he and his team are implementing this year. So again, we're expanding our academic labs, we're expanding specially-designed instruction training, and we're offering additional training opportunities that focus on specific strategies for teaching reading. Currently, we're working to revise and implement the All-in Tutoring Program, which targets math and reading for students that are at risk of failing their SOLs. And we're also working to ensure that our tutors are highly qualified and appropriately matched to the content that they teach. So next year, in looking at how we'll be accredited, there are significant accountability reforms. This new accountability system will be implemented for the upcoming year. The system will include four performance categories, distinguished, on-track, off-track, and needs intensive support, and schools will then earn points in these different The weighing of the categories looks different across each level and includes some additional data points like Five Cs performance task. This was just released a few weeks ago, so all school divisions are learning right now what this means and how to calculate this for the upcoming year. So our ultimate goal, of course, is to ensure that every child is able to graduate and pursue their dream, whether it's going to college, going to a career, going to the military. That's what we're about. What questions can I answer for you?
Thank you, Dr. Wickham. Or who has questions? Who wants to start? Sure, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wickham, for this presentation. I know it took a lot of work, and I really appreciate you going through it with us and all the different facets that you're trying to cover. I can't help but notice the relationship between success and absenteeism. Like, if you're not there, you can't learn, and just how hard it has been to recover since COVID lockdown. I also noticed in my work with the MCEF, reviewing grant applications, that many of those were connected to trying to implement different incentives across elementary, middle, and high schools to address chronic absenteeism. So what can we do as a board to? So what can we do as a board, from a policy level, from a board level, to help you all with this? Because I feel like that's a really big key.
That is a great question. So I think one of the things that our families don't always realize, because it doesn't make sense to them, and I'm not so sure that it makes sense to me, but if a student is excused, they have an excused absence, so they're legitimately sick, maybe they have COVID or the flu, and they're out for five days, that counts against them towards chronic absenteeism. So really, what we need is a little bit of relief from that particular piece and what chronic absenteeism means. It would be helpful to us, and I think, you know, many school systems around the state would say the same thing, it would make more sense if unexcused absences, for example, is what counted towards chronic absenteeism. We're telling children and families, you know, stay home, if you're sick, stay home. We don't want to pass the germs, but if you stay home, our schools are going to be dinged for you being chronically absent, and that's a real problem for us. So I think that's one piece, and then I think the other piece is just continuing to, you know, get the word out. It's important to be at school. You can't learn if you're sitting at home in the same way you can if you're in the classroom with your teacher. That's a good question, thank you.
I was going to say, and that's a great point, but do we have any data that shows that the kids that are in chronic absenteeism are the ones that are not passing SOLs?
Yes, and we can pull that for you too, but there is a correlation between the children who are absent, you know, 30 days, as much as 30, 40 days, and these are the children that we invite to our summer academy, for example, to try to get them caught up, but absolutely, that data does exist.
Okay. The only reason that I ask is just because I know of some students that don't have that and still did not pass their SOL, so, you know, that's why I was wondering if we can tie the two together, or, I know we have this problem, and we have this problem, but does that mean they're related? So...
I think, again, a really good question, I think, in hearing from the principals and who they invited to summer academy last year, story after story of, we invited this child, they failed their SOL test, but they missed 25 days, or, we had one child that missed close to, you know, just a whole quarter of school, and that's so hard to recover from. It's hard to get in a hole and get caught up.
We'll keep going this way. Ms. Pardon?
So, thank you for the information, it was wonderful. I did have a couple of questions. I just jotted down some of the numbers as you were going through. So it does show that we have 11 out of our 18 schools had increased with reading. Dr. Wickham, do you think that this might be due to benchmark, or do you think this might be due to something else as to why we saw that increase in that portion that you were talking about in the reading part?
I think it's related to a variety of things, that's a good question. I do think that whenever you adopt a series, it takes a while to learn it. I think that's part of it. I think we also spend a lot of support and training in the science of reading and just really helping our teachers to focus in on what do you do for students when they're struggling to learn to read. But I'm glad you asked that, I'm going to take that and push that a little bit further. You know, our messaging and what we're telling teachers and our principals right now in terms of our new curriculum at the elementary level, and we'll be adopting new curriculum at the secondary level as well. Yeah, I've been teaching for a very long time, and I have never taught word for word, page by page, from a teacher's manual. That just isn't how we teach. It's there, it's our curriculum, it's what we use, but you can't go buy a scripted book. There are no textbooks that are 100% aligned with Virginia SOLs, because they would never sell textbooks, we're the only state that has them, right? So teaching the children in front of you, using that curriculum to teach the standards, but to differentiate for the children in front of you, and that's what's really important.
Okay, perfect. And a note on the other numbers in some of the slides that I was noticing. So we have, I happen to notice, and if most people watched during COVID, they saw that I was a huge advocate, and I was extremely concerned about how much school our kids were missing. And I wanted to get our kids back into school as soon as possible, but safely. And I was glad we were able to finally get them back in when we did, however, I know we are still struggling meeting those learning issues that we did with keeping them out, and that we knew it was going to be a while to try to get them back to where they needed to be. So, for example, even though the reading showed an increase in 11 of 18 schools, it was still 81% pre-COVID, and then we're down to 75 even this year with reading. And then I noticed in math, we were pre-COVID 76, or no, we were up 86, and then now we are down to 76. And then in science too, we were pre-COVID 83, now down to 72. And I noticed in just about every one of our ethnic subgroups, we were down as well. So I'm trying to figure out a way, I know we probably shouldn't be there yet, maybe with the learning loss, so to speak, but that still concerns me that we're still down before pre-COVID at this point. So I think, since our teachers have been told not to, or have been told to use the study sync, are we ensuring that the standards-based instruction is getting taught in the classrooms still? Do we know that?
Yes, and the message has been, again, even at the secondary level, you know, the curriculum is the curriculum, whether you're using this, or you've pulled a novel that was connected to it, ultimately, we're responsible for teaching the standards.
Okay. And what I did a quick comparison, just because I just happen to be, I have a few friends on the board in Roanoke County, and so they're close proximity and a few other things otherwise to us. So I just pulled their information, and it showed them that they were, you know, 83% at this point, they're up 83% with all of their students in reading. And their sped students are even up 52 to R35. So I don't know, I don't know why we're falling behind Roanoke County. It makes me a little concerned and sad a little bit that we're not at least up to where they are, but I didn't know if there was any light that could be shed on that, or if that's even a real, you know, compare, you know, am I being right in comparing us to Roanoke? I don't know that for sure.
Well, I think particularly in terms of students with disabilities, for example, year after year, we're below the state average, and I just, you know, working with the people here, our teachers are fantastic, our administrators are fantastic, our families are amazing, we can do better than this, we should be doing better than this. And I think, you know, Dr. Walker and his team, when he talked about offering a continuum of services, just making sure that all of our students with disabilities, that they learn, we all learn in different ways, but making sure their learning styles, their needs are met, and I think that that will help us moving forward.
Perfect. Thank you, that was all I had.
Dr. Gentry?
Thank you as well for the presentation. Yeah, I do have a couple, a few questions. I know that the board likes a lot of data. I don't, as I was going through, so I was like, there are 46 slides on this slide deck, and I don't know about you all, but I would love to see more concise information, because I think we could have had it condensed in a lot fewer slides, and it's not a critique of you personally, but I was like, this is, these are a lot of slides. But that's a board decision, and what the board would like to see. Okay, so my overall take on this was, we're kind of just floating along. Like, we're making improvements, but we're also going down, and I was like, do we have goals? Like, do we literally have goals, like even reach goals? And I'm not just talking about like the state benchmarks, but nothing in here suggests to me that, you know, next year, we want to raise that from 72 to 75%. And for me, at least the question of, what is accountability? Like, literally, what is accountability in this district for these results? Can you explain to me, what does that look like? Because I know it says in here, that's really important. What does that mean?
I can answer that, Dr. Wickham, if that's okay. Dr. Gentry? You know, one of the things we've tried to focus on specifically this year is accountability, because it's exactly what you said. You know, when you look at these numbers and you compare yourself to the state average in a number of those areas across the board, we're below the state average. And compared to Roanoke County too, like, I never want to be below average on anything. I like to think that I'm better than average, you all may think differently, but I think we are as a division, I think we are as individuals, I think we have some really good people here doing some really hard work, but we're not getting the results we need. So at the end of the day, we focus from the time we met over the summer with our administrative team on our retreat, accountability is the theme this year. Accountability, high expectations and achievement for all, accountability and reducing disproportionality. That's our goal, that we've been articulating, repeating with all of our administrators, they're bringing it back to the buildings with their staff. So yeah, the minimal goal is to beat over the state average in every area for next year. Some of the areas where we're significantly below, like if we looked at our SOL performance on, with our students with special needs, you know, we need to make improvement, 10 points, 15 points, we need to show growth next year and growth the following year, and that's our expectation moving forward. And we all talked as a school board, that that degree of accountability is going to require your support, you know, when the excrement hits the air conditioning.
Yeah, but to have those standards, you need to communicate numbers. You need to say, our pass rate needs to be X, Y, or Z, because if you don't set concrete standards, you can't hold people accountable. What are you holding them accountable for?
I can answer that. We have, every single school is required to do a continuous school improvement plan. And part of that plan is that they're required, and again, this requirement by the state, they have to have goals that address any underperforming student group, whether it's all students, whether it's a particular group of students. So any student that did not meet a benchmark in a school, that school is required to have a measurable goal for those students who are underperforming for that group. So every single school does have goals that then we measure at the end of the school year when the next scores are reported.
Dr. Wickham, can we share that with the school board?
Sure.
Yeah, and I think that that should happen not only at the school level, that if there's going to be accountability, and it's going to be effective, it has to be up and down the organization. So what I read here is like, at the school level, we're going to hold you accountable, but what's holding the administration accountable for success? And that's what I would love to see communicated to the school board, that not only do you not like mediocre, but you're setting high standards for yourself, not just the people underneath you.
I believe that's been communicated to all of our administration and their goals and their summative evaluations, like I should have, Dr. Wickham did many of those.
That is correct.
And my expectation, you all are going to hold me accountable as well, and I've been sharing that with everyone, that our expectation is that we then hold everyone else accountable. We're better than average.
So I would like, like, numbers, like, this is what you need to hold me accountable, this is what I want for our rates to be.
All right.
Just a suggestion. But, so, there are a couple of details, and I'll move on now. You said that there were three accredited with conditions.
Yes.
Like, which schools, what resources are you giving to them to get them up? I mean, I need a little more information on that, because that suggests that we've got some schools that need additional help.
Yeah. So typically, when we do this presentation, it's before scores are officially released. Scores were supposed to be officially posted as of yesterday on the website, so this was created before that, but they are on the website now, so I can't answer that question. Those three schools that are accredited with condition are AMS, CMS, and SMS. And all of those schools will be in a form of school improvement, in which we're required by the state to do certain things, and one of those things is to give those schools extra supports. So we work closely with them, we go back, we take a look at their plan. We've already met with all of the schools, we've met with every single principal to go through their plans, we make sure that their goals are aligned with their data, we look at what's required by the state, and for those particular schools, we meet with them either quarterly or monthly, depending upon their score, as a division support team. We also meet with them once a month at their school, we meet with their principal, so there's lots of monitoring and supports in place. So they have to set goals based on their underperforming student groups, for those, they have to have action steps, they have to have a process for monitoring, and then there's a team that comes in to monitor and offer support as well.
Okay. Yeah, some of that information's wonderful to know. And then I'll just ask one final question here. What is an all-level-one school? I don't even know what that means.
So when you, that's a great question. When you go to the school quality profile report, there are different areas, so there's overall academic achievement in math, there's overall academic achievement in reading, there's overall academic achievement in science, then there's subgroup achievement for different groups of students under math and under reading, and then there's chronic absenteeism. So when you look at all of that, many, many times, it's a lot of different levels, but there are those schools that are all-level-one. It's also color-coded, and they're green, and principals get very excited to see the green. But keep in mind, all of that is going away, so what I'm telling you tonight will be completely different next year when this presentation is done in September or October.
Okay, okay, great. I have other questions, but I'm going to move on now.
Ms. Franklin?
So, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, is that the finalized data was not released until yesterday?
So the VDOE, they release data to the school system so that they can check their data and have access to it, that you're not allowed to publicly share in terms of different parts of information. It's now been posted on their website, and that's what I mean, it's officially posted on their website now. So you have preliminary results that you calculate, you can compare it to what the state has, you can ask the state questions, and they give you a window to do that.
So it wasn't official until yesterday, is what you're saying?
The data, I believe, was posted on the website as of yesterday, but school divisions have that data, the same data that's posted early, so that we can have access and compare to our locally tabulated numbers, which are normally pretty accurate.
Okay, so we've had the data for a while, is that what you're saying?
So we've had the unofficial data for a little while now, yes.
So when you say unofficial, because I'm a little confused, so they released the data so that we could compare it, but it's still the same data that is on the website now?
That is correct, with the one exception, so, for example, this year when we received our data, there were a couple of high schools where their C, 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 R, I data did not look accurate. The principals dug into the data, and they realized that there were some students who had not been counted. So we sent that data into the VDOE to say there were some students who were missing from that count, that then brought up their, that index rating for them. So the state gives the school system some preliminary data to look at to see if their calculations, we get to compare our calculations to theirs, and if we've made any mistakes, which in that particular case we did, we get to submit that and ask them to review it to include it. It's an annual process that the state does.
Okay. Because I don't recall, in all the years that we've been tracking this data, that we didn't get the presentation that has every school, down to the grade levels, that identifies what's going on with our different groups of students, what's happening. So when we get overall graduation rates, it looks good, but it doesn't drill down and tell me what's going on with all of our students, so we know where we need to focus. Same thing with absenteeism. So, great to hear that we've got schools that are and schools that are moving forward, but I'd like to know which schools they are, and what areas that they are excelling in, and what areas we may be struggling. Because how can, to Dr. Gentry's, how can we move forward if we don't know what's going on? And again, it's public information, so we should be, it should be in our public presentations. So I'm just a little kind of left-hanging as far as knowing what's going on in our schools, because this is good information, but it does not give the full picture as to what's happening in our buildings, and we need to know that, because we can't hold each other accountable unless we know that, and we can't support our students unless we know that. So I would like to have that information so that we can go over it and have that further discussion about what's going on, and... and what the real plans are. Because, quite frankly, a lot of the things that were said tonight, I've heard over and over again throughout the years, and we're still struggling. Yeah, COVID had something to do with this, but there's still some things that we should be doing and should have been doing for years, but we just don't. When you have only three or four African-American students, sometimes in a building alone, and they're still struggling, something's wrong there. And I've been saying that for years, but yet, we still have the same kind of results. So we've got to do something different and put it out there big time. This is, this is the goal that we have, and this is how we're going to get there with all of our students. The broad brush does not work. It's not working.
Do we, do we feel like that the cell phone policy will change some of this, maybe? The only reason I ask that is in the summertime, I had ran into a principal, and we were talking about the policy getting ready to go into effect, and, and he had shared with me that he walked down the, down a hall and, and just kind of nonchalantly, you know, counted. And he counted 46 students on their phone during instructional time. And I can't help but think that has played a part in students not maybe rising above, not learning the way they need to learn. You know, I, I think all our technology is great, but I'm, I'm a personal believer, writing information down sometimes helps memorization skills, and we don't do a lot of that kind of thing anymore, you know, since everything's on Chromebooks. And, I mean, what are your thoughts on something like that? I mean, do you feel like that's going to make an impact? Do you think maybe as we progress with these expectations of no, no cell phone and things may look up, because kids are kind of forced to listen a little more to instructional instead of piddling on their phone, and they're, oh, I can do two things at one time? No, you can't. No, you can't.
What a great question. How long do you have for this answer? So, what, one of the greatest opportunities that I have is to be able to visit schools and go in the classroom and see good instruction and see what students are doing. And it is so different this year compared to last year, because last year, when I would walk some of the classrooms, especially at the secondary level, you would see children with their Chromebooks open and then their cell phone behind their Chromebook. And you can't split your attention that way. We all think we're really great at multitasking, but you cannot focus on playing that game on your phone and also listen to the teacher. So I do think it's going to be helpful. And I think in another way that's going to be helpful is, let's face it, some of our children were getting in trouble and getting suspended from school or being sent to the office and spending time away from instruction because of the things that they were doing on their phones. So I, I think it's going to help in multiple ways. I really do.
Dr. Rountree.
Not on, so to that point, I think statewide, we're going to have, not have phones. So this is comparisons to other places around the state. So we're, all areas are going to have that, that boon to their ratings. A couple of questions. The, do we have the data for the various school levels? And can that be presented, and the individual schools, to, to Ms. Franklin's point?
Absolutely, and it's also, we're happy to share that with you. And it's also on the website right now, there's a, forgive me if I get it wrong, but on the VDOE website, there's a place for statistics and reports, and you have all of the spreadsheets for the past, I don't know, five testing years or so. It's quite a few. And you can go in, and it's subject by subject for the division, for school systems. So, yes, we absolutely can do it, and that information is available.
And do we have particular schools that we should apply some additional focus to in order to bring the, these numbers up?
Yes.
Okay.
Middle school, across the board, middle school. And there are a lot of theories as to why that is. You know, at high school, when I get to high school, I have to pass a certain number of SOL tests for verified credits. In middle school, unless I'm taking a high school course, for example, like Earth Science, I don't get verified credits. And so one of the issues that our principals have shared and our teachers have shared multiple times is just how do you motivate middle school students? And, you know, there's a lot of answers to that, but really, you know, it comes back around to just making your classroom so engaging and so fun. It's just, it's the place where really we want to be, and, you know, we want to perform well for that teacher. But definitely, we see more struggles at the middle school level than we do elementary and high. High school, the struggle isn't so much the academics, it's chronic absenteeism. And even though our numbers improved at the high school level, when I'm able to drive and my parents are at work, sometimes it's easier for me to stay home and sleep late than it is to get up and drive myself to school. So that's the help that we need at that level.
Um, and then looking through this data, and thank you for putting all this together. This is a lot of material. In the, for this year, all students reading, there's a two-point difference between MCPS and Virginia. I don't completely understand how we are positive there when our largest demographic group, at 75%, is minus five points. And our other, some of our other groups that are equal size, multiracial is minus six, Asians plus six, blacks minus eight, Hispanics plus five, whites minus five. Those other groups are approximately the same size, and they're, they're balancing each other. But we have minus five on white students at, at 75%, yet our overall is a plus two.
I'm glad I was not the only one perplexed by that math. So I went back and I looked at that report over and over again. I sent it to a colleague, our math administrator, and I asked her to check the numbers behind me. Then when the numbers were officially released, I went back on the website and pulled them again, because that math perplexed me as well. But that is what the state is currently showing for Montgomery County in comparison to Virginia.
Yeah, that's perplexing math. Yeah, and then, but to your, a follow-up question on the middle school focus to, to helping out our students. Is that, is there an eight, or a grade level specific? Is sixth grade having more trouble than eighth grade? Or is it just completely homogenous across the middle school?
I'd really need to dig into that a little bit more and go back and look before, before I answer it. We do think in science, we think that science, spreading the science out of, over three years, we're going to see a huge increase in science scores. We're confident of that. Trying to compact science, especially for children who may not be strong readers, that's been really hard for some of our students. But I need to go back and, and double-check my numbers before I answer that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Ms. Purcell. Oh, you did, sweet, it's my turn. Of course, very cool. Right, because we did that, and then we do that. So I have one, one, one comment for you and then one for the board, I think, as well. But I guess, particularly with the reading presentation, most of your presentation of the slides were comparing us to the state, right? So I tally, there are nine total in that section, and seven of those, the state didn't really change that much, right? For us, five of ours were either pretty much the same as the state or above. Great. But in six of those nine, we went down, or we didn't really change that much. So yay, better than state, but we're not getting better, right? So, I mean, I guess, this isn't a question that you've got enough time tonight to answer either, right? But, I mean, I think, I think, kind of from my own perspective, what I've heard echoed tonight is just, like, what are we doing to get better, right? We got to start going up and not worrying about the state. It's great if we're, if we're above the state hours, but if we keep going up, eventually the state hours isn't going to matter, we're just going to get better, right? Dr. Bragan has mentioned these things previously. I don't care if it's 59% of our students passing, that's, I can't do that math. If it's 41%, it's not, right? I can do that math. So that's a bigger problem, right? So, we got to do something.
So this is a really broad answer, because I agree with you totally. And being a competitive person, being a former principal, where my first-year's principal, I want to clarify, it wasn't because of me, it was because of tremendous staff. We closed our achievement gap for a couple of our student groups by as much as 40, 40 points, 40 percentage points in reading and math. But what we did then is not necessarily going to be the thing that works today. I know this, our teachers can't work any harder. Our principals can't work any harder. But, you know, a few years ago, there was that fancy term about strategic abandonment. We've really got to take a look at those things that aren't working for us. And I think, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting, you know, a different result, right? So I think we really need to dig in and take a look at, okay, we don't want to let these things go, but they're not working. What do we need to do instead? Because the children that, that are sitting in front of us now, they need something different. Social, emotional concerns. More students coming in with, with challenges. You know, we've talked about some of our extreme behaviors that we've seen with a handful of our students with disabilities and some of our different challenges. Again, to highlight the importance of offering a continuum of services, but we really all have to take a look at, what are those things that we're doing that we now need to let go of and try some different things to better meet the learning needs of our students?
Okay. I look forward to, to continuing conversations about that and ideas and stuff, because I think that this board is, is open to new ideas, eager to, eager to try new stuff. I guess my comment to the board, and this is just a little more introspective, but as I heard your comments, I heard some people saying this is too much data. I heard some people saying, I want more data, right? So I think as a board, we need to do a little bit better job at articulating to the administration what we want to see in these things. Perhaps a presentation that's more of a summary, but more, more data available as an additional attachment, the slices and dices. I mean, you can slice and dice this stuff a million different ways, right? You're not going to be able to predict every way that we wanted. But I think maybe a higher-level presentation, but, but more data. So if we have more specific questions, we've got access to it. I don't know, if, if there's a thought on that, I'd like to hear it.
So, I don't want the message to be, at least for me, can you just dump a lot of data on me? Because sometimes that happens. You're like, you want more information? I'll give you more information. Know what I would really love? I would love a report that has data, analysis, since these, that sets these benchmarks, and then this is a summary. And, and we can prepare ahead of time with whatever questions that we have. I want to, like, school-level data. I, I mean, like, I would love a report. Now, if some people don't have time to digest it, fine. But that's part of accountability, is like, you've got something in writing, and a year from now, like, I don't want to wait another year. A year from now, you look at that report and like, how did we do? And we don't have to look back at a slide with four, like, a deck of 46 slides. So something tangible that the community can have access to. So that's my, that would be my message to, to the administration. I'd like to see a report with data and analysis and so, some solutions to the, to some of these issues.
And I think just off the top of my head, the school's annual plans that I described, they start out analyzing their data and explaining why their goals are what they are might be a, a helpful step in the right direction, and we'll get those as well.
Guess my point was just, we as a board need to decide what we want them to produce, because what you want might be different than what Ms. Parton wants. Might be different than what Ms. Franklin wants, right?
So I'll just say, again, as long as I have been here and that the SOLs have been in place, we have received a full picture of what's going on in each building, down to the grade level, so that we're able, and the community is able to see, this is what's happening, and ask our questions around that. Because if I have information beforehand, I don't have to maybe ask as many questions. But if I don't have the information, you got to dig for it. So I don't know that it's a matter of what the board wants, it's, but what the board should have. Because we're not getting what we should have to be able to understand what's going on in the district.
So what I'm hearing is a report with, gives a lot of data and gives summaries and what our expectations are for improvement. And Ms. Franklin's asking for the data, I believe, by school level, by, by each school and by grade level.
Yeah, unless somebody else, I mean, if other people object to that approach, I mean, that's just what I would, I would find very useful.
Okay, we can do that.
Yes, including a summary with recommendations on how to improve and what the, the targets are towards improvement in a, in a one-slide section, that we just compare that slide next year to the slide that we put, produced this year on how we did.
Any other questions or comments on this presentation before we move on? Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, the proposed membership for the Special Education Advisory Committee is presented for the board's approval. Do I have a motion to approve 2024-25 Special Education Advisory Committee membership in makeup form as presented? So we can have discussion about it.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Rountree? Any discussion, board? Ms. Parton? Yeah, I got you.
So I normally don't have many issues with our committees most of the time. But since we have been discussing, and there has been some discussion about making sure that we have some representation from all of our districts, and I know that can be extremely hard from some of our districts just because we don't have people that are, you know, openly wanting to volunteer. I did notice for this special committee that there is no representation from my district, which I kind of feel like is unfair, because I don't feel like there's any kind of voice there on this topic. Again, I know that that is normally an issue from my district a lot of the time. Trying to think of ways, I try to reach out on social media, and I try to let people know to get things out in the district about things. I don't know if the school can work on the districts that we don't seem to get quite the volunteer representation to want to serve on these committees. And I know it's time away from, you know, people's lives, and people have lots going on. But that is probably going to be the reason that I am going to vote no on this one, because I just don't feel, I feel like there should be at least some type of representation from there, even if it's not as many representing as it is some other districts, rather than zero. So I just wanted to, to make that announcement.
Dr. Bragan, who can speak to this?
I would ask if Dr. Walker wants to explain the committee selection here, what we did?
It does seem like the table and the text aren't, aren't consistent. One says 4-0, one says 3-1.
Which one is correct?
Repeat it, please.
The table states that there's Auburn 1, Blacksburg 4, Christiansburg 4, and Eastern Montgomery 0. But as you go down further, please provide the total number of non-central office staff members from each community serving on the committee. Auburn 1, Blacksburg 4, Christiansburg 3, Eastern Montgomery 1. But there's not any Eastern Montgomery noted anywhere higher in the text. We were just wondering which is correct.
Right, there are, as Ms. Parton said, there wasn't a representative from there. So that, probably that table didn't tabulate correctly, that formula, then, you know, then, we'll take a look at that.
So, so the table is, is correct? Is that what you're saying? That the, that the table is showing the correct representation?
No, we, we did lose one in your district.
We lost it.
We did, yes.
Okay, okay.
So that's why it's on there and then?
That's correct.
And not on the table, okay.
And it didn't tabulate correctly, so it's within the formula.
So it's within the formula.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes. So it is difficult. We did, CAC had their meeting last night, and so this did come up as ways to, you know, provide more visibility and to kind of each member to duplicate themselves. But many members did state that, you know, it's difficult when they have a child with a disability to get out, to come to the meetings in person. However, we do offer the virtual option as well. So it's a matter of time as well. And so we do.
And I do know with the virtual, not to interrupt you, so my apologies, but down the mountain, we still have Wi-Fi issues and signal. Because I lose the signal every time I go down the mountain and come back up the mountain. So hopefully, the Board of Supervisors is, we're working to fix that. So I think even with the virtual, there may be some issues there on that end of the county as well. But I appreciate you making that option and reaching out and trying to find representation there. Because I know it's difficult. It's hard to find volunteers now. It truly is.
And it's also, we're looking at to increase the membership in reference to racial disparities as well, you know, African-American and Asian.
Yes.
We do have the Google form that the community can fill out to show their interest.
Right.
So we're combing through that forum, you know, during the week.
Okay.
And so we're also looking to make phone calls to parents directly.
Okay.
And to gain interest that way. But the majority of the excuses are is that the time factor and that they've got a lot on their plate.
Yeah. And that's understandable.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I might even consider reaching out to the principals and maybe seeing if there's something in-house in the schools that they can do to maybe help get the word out and see if they can do something to help these community members be able to find time or find a way to do something. Because I do know that we have a number of those type students on my end of the district.
Yes, ma'am.
And so I feel like their voices would be very beneficial being on that committee and hearing from what they have to say.
Guess we can go around if there's additional comments. Dr. Getchry?
Okay, thank you. So I have a few questions. One, the form that we got with the description, which is up right now, if you go to the top, the advisory committee reporting a board or superintendent, and it has it listed as superintendent? Is the committee a board committee or superintendent committee?
To my understanding, it's a board committee. The board approves the membership of the CAC.
Okay, because it says superintendent here, which could lead to some confusion.
Okay, so we do note that.
Yeah, it's a board committee. Another thing I had a question about is school board office, are they members? Are you a member of the committees, all members?
No, we're not voting members.
But are you members of the committee?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So.
We're consulting members, yes.
Okay. Then the other question I have is, are the majority of the members of the committee, are they parents with students' disabilities?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was a little confused because it looks like a number of these individuals or school board office employees who are members are just non-voting. Because that's what it would suggest here by saying non-voting is that they're non-voting members. Is that, so they are members of the committee, they're just non-voting?
Yes, members of the committee, but non-voting, and we consult with the actual voting members of the committee.
Okay. So the reason I'm asking these questions is advisory committees, as you know, play a really important role and they offer external advice and consultation. And I was looking again at AVAs, and I won't read the rest, but basically the administrative code. And it says that three things, that the majority of the committee has to be parents with children with disability, at least one teacher, and that additional local school division personnel shall serve only as consultants to the committee. So they're not members of the committee.
Yes, we do have a teacher representative. That this document was developed before we got our teacher representative. And so during our meeting yesterday, we had a teacher representative, you know, present.
Okay. So I think if you present this to the board, that would be better if it were clear that these are actually non-members.
Gotcha.
They're not even non-voting, they're just not even members, they're just consultants, just to be compliant with Code of Virginia.
We can do that.
So I agree as well. I want to see that representation and some of this clarity before approving the committee.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. Franklin?
Okay. So just to make sure I understand, because one of the questions I have is, we're just as member, can it be identified as a community member, a parent? Because we had some concerns about staff being on committees as parents also. And the board didn't feel like that was a good representation of the community because there could be some biases or whatever. Also, I think we've talked about the representation not being what we would like it to be. So I think you've heard everything so far.
Okay, we can break that out for you, that's no problem.
Dr. Roundtree?
My only item was also identifying the people that are MCPS employees that are on the committee and then those that are just are non-MCPS community representatives. That'd be very beneficial. Thank you.
Ms. Purcell?
So based on the concerns that other board members have already mentioned, were this committee to not be approved tonight? Would that slow up progress in addressing the needs and the duty of the committee? You know, I know that there are time sensitive things and we don't need kids in some kind of limbo because the committee isn't formed and, you know. So in theory, were that to happen, how quickly would we need to see a revision, some additions, the clarifications that my colleagues had asked for to make sure that we're not slowing progress that the kids need?
It wouldn't be any problem. Just, you know, what timeframe do you determine you want that? I can provide that. I'll get that to Dr. Briggin and we can get that to you. I can do it rather quickly.
Yeah. I think we could table this and put it on the next board meeting for approval. Come back with the correct information as a board of committee and all that. I think that's what you were asking.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor already, so.
I motioned, is that right?
Can we motion, mid-motion to table?
You could just vote.
You could just vote, yeah.
Not being affirmative.
Right, right.
Can I ask one more question?
Please.
Just in the lieu of the conversation, how hard is it to find people to serve on the committees? I mean, we're talking like it's just easy to do and it's not.
It's difficult.
And it's very difficult. So I think we have to give credit a little bit there. It's not as easy, you can't make people sign up and want to be on a committee. And it's not fair to this situation for it not to be something we don't approve because they can't get committee, you know, people that we want to see. And so with that being said, I understand people don't want to sign up, they don't want to do that kind of work anymore. I mean, it's just hard, everybody's busy, they don't want to obligate themselves. Am I speaking correctly?
Yeah, you're correct.
Thank you.
I do have one more question. What time does the committee meet?
Five thirty to seven.
Okay. Which, again, is a time when most parents are busy trying to get the day ended, things wrapped up, children fed and whatever needs to be done. So, yeah, time, timing can be a huge, can make a huge difference. So we have been saying this for several years. And quite frankly, every committee keeps saying the same thing, keep doing the same thing. As Dr. Wickham has said, you know, insanity. If you keep doing the same thing the same way, expect something different. And we keep doing things the same way. So unless we do something different, I'm not approving any of these tonight. Some of them didn't even give reasons why or what they were going to do to try to change things. So, yeah. So I think it's fair to say we want to see something different and we're serious about it.
I would share my comments, but mine would echo pretty much what everyone else has heard. As I already said, I mean, for me, just the fundamental description of this membership isn't even correct, that it's not listed as a board committee. So at least got to get that cleaned up, right?
Sure.
But, you know, the issues that Ms. Franklin was talking about, this is the same conversations we've had multiple times. So, you know, I know we're not going to find these people overnight, but we at least got to, as a board, we got to have some confidence that there's something being done differently to try to change the situation, right? I haven't heard that yet.
Can I just add one point, not to drag this out? Is one of the reasons why it's important that it's clear that it's a board committee is that board committees are subject to FOIA. So right now, like if I looked at the calendar for MCPS, I don't see any advisory committees. And so we're obligated as a division for board committees, which means we have to have public notice for advisory committees. And so we need to take this seriously, the obligation. So that's why, I know that there's a difficulty in getting members, but we have certain legal obligations if it's a board-appointed committee. So that's why it's important that it's clear to the community that this is a board, to hold us accountable.
We can take care of that, there's no problem.
Okay, board, we have a motion and a second on the table. We've had a hearty discussion. If there isn't anything else, we'll go ahead and call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
No, just because of the comments of it not being set up the way it needs to be set up, but that's the only reason.
Franklin?
No.
Dr. Getchry?
No.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Purcell?
No.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Seven opposed.
Motion fails. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next up, the proposed membership for the School Health Advisory Board is presented for the board's approval. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024-25 School Health Advisory Board as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Purcell? Any discussion?
So in this one, when it's talking about community representatives, community refers to a non-MCPS employee and then if there's a school or a town that's referring to, well, I assume those are schools, not intended to be towns. It's like Blacksburg is Blacksburg Middle or Blacksburg High.
Yes, sir. These are typically community organizations. You might consider them experts in the field. Dr. Ray is a good example. She's the regional epidemiologist for the newer Valley Health Department. So she's not necessarily Blacksburg or Christiansburg. She's out there kind of as a community expert, serving our whole division.
Board, do we want to go around on this one? Ms. Purcell? Do you have anything?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm sorry. So this is a completely non-voting committee, Mr.?
I worked with this committee, this will be the sixth year. We've never conducted any votes. We basically discuss and work to come to agreement and would bring forward any of our information before the board as suggestions or recommendations such as the wellness policy. We are truly operating just in an advisory fashion. So we've never had any formal votes in my experience and so we mark them all as non-voting.
Thank you.
Good dialogue typically is what we end up having.
I can imagine. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Ms. Bond?
I was just going to say, I used to sit on this committee and you're right, it had a lot of good conversation. And there have been a couple times when I would have liked to seen more of a range, and I do see that here, I have to say. There's a little bit more of a range of different careers on here that I was looking for last, some of the other years passed and didn't see it. So, and I know when I sat on the board, we are the committee, we would meet in different industry spots. Do you guys do that or?
We have not to this point. We, following the pandemic, we did primarily Zoom meetings. We do intend this year to offer both. We will meet in person for anyone who can make it and offer Zoom as well to those who can't make the location.
Right, and that made it, that makes it easier. But I know it was really educational experience-wise. I mean, we had it at Volvo one year, we had it at Corning, we had it at different places and throughout the county. And it truly, truly showed you when you didn't work in that line of work, how those people and they, the, you know, administration shared some of the issues of why they weren't getting staff and why they weren't getting students and things like, and it truly was beneficial. So I'm not saying you got to do that. I'm just saying that that was a neat, neat thing, so.
That would be an easy one, if that's the board's wish, we can change locations right now.
No, no, I'm not saying do that. I'm just saying it was really cool to do that from time to time to see how our work environment, how to get students listening, because that's the main thing that I would hear is workforce saying, you're not listening, you're not hearing what we need and we're not getting it. So that was a real interesting piece to be able to do that. So I'm not saying it would work now, just saying it worked then.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Parton?
Jase?
Ma'am.
Thank you for chairing this committee. The only question I think I really have on this one is, is this an MCPS committee or is this a state mandated committee considering what the nature of the committee is?
It is in Virginia code and up until a few years ago, it was required. It is now optional.
Okay.
And to this point, Montgomery County has continued to have this committee. We, I'll speak for me, I won't use a we. I think it's useful for our division. I think it's a good way for me to engage with the community members. And even though we still have to bring a revised wellness policy back before the board, hopefully soon, I appreciate having various perspectives other than just what would typically be my, me and my little team.
So at one point, it sounds like it was technically mandated, but now it sounds like the state has moved to it being optional per school division?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. That was my only question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Getchry?
Thank you as well. I'll keep this really quick here. So when do you prepare the annual report for the school board from the committee?
To this point, I really have not prepared an annual report for the school board. We're happy to do that. The biggest reporting out that this committee has served, the School Health Advisory Board, is the triennial, of course, every three years. We just completed our second triennial since I've been a part of the board this past summer. I believe that's available right now on our website, it's public document.
Yeah.
We certainly could report to the board whenever you ask us to.
Well, I'm only asking that because there are very few things that the, this board is, not our board, but this board is asked to do, is tasked to do. And I know that you just worked on the policy and that was a lot of work. But one of the things that's supposed to happen, the reason for having this board is to prepare an annual report. So it's not whether it's the will of the board or not to do it. It's if you're going to have one, that's the expectation. So from the Code of Virginia. So that's why I asked. And the second thing about the, the only other thing I'll add is, since it is a board committee, to make sure that there's a public notice so that people know when it meets.
My, yes, sir. My understanding, and Superintendent can correct me, my understanding is we intend on the website to post all of these committees' meetings in advance, kind of all together in one central place. So, yes, sir, I think the intention is to make that
Okay.
very convenient to the community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, you'll have to forgive me, mine was pulled up.
Jason, you'll have to forgive me. Mine was pulled up on Career and Tech and so I'm, I'm sorry.
I wondered.
And I looked down and I went, oh, my gosh, what am I doing? I wonder, because when you said the health, I said, what? So I didn't mean to jump ahead. I apologize. I am so sorry. Everything I said will be on two more down, okay?
Got it. I, I thought, I thought maybe, but I wasn't going to be presumptuous.
I'm sorry. You're, okay, all right. Yep. CTE Advisory Committee is what, yeah.
Ms. Franklin?
Well, I hope that we continue with a committee with this type of makeup to get that community involvement. Because how else would you, I mean, it's just, just to me, makes no sense not to. I may not disagree with some aspects of how it's made up, but it's a valuable committee.
Thank you.
So if I got it right, Dr. Roundtree, you started, right? Cool. It's my turn. So I guess I just want to, like now I'm questioning whether I understand these two, these two presentations. So if, if you scroll down, Tosh, on the, on the next page, we've got that same kind of count, right? The ratio for number of representatives, 1, 2, 2, 1. And if you scroll down to tick more, it's 1, 3, 2, 1. Are those meant to be the same numbers or is those actually two different things?
My understanding, and perhaps I misunderstood the form, I understood that the first chart are the ratios I'm trying to hit. One representative for Auburn for every two at Blacksburg, two at Christiansburg, one at Eastern Montgomery.
Okay.
My understanding is that's how I'm trying, if, if I can use the word weigh, that's how I'm trying to weigh the committee based upon our communities. And then the numbers beneath it, 1, 3, 2, 1, is what I actually have on the committee. And I know Blacksburg's a little higher there than the two, but I also have the blessing of a student on, on my committee, which can be incredibly difficult to get on the team. And so I, I was going to take him, right? Wherever he was from, I was going to take him. So that's how I got my third Blacksburg representative.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Then I probably owe Dr. Walker an apology because I misunderstood that presentation before. Those numbers weren't necessarily meant to be the same. If they were the same, then that's great. If they're different, as long as there's a reason, right? But I guess if they're lower, then that's a problem, right? Because you're not.
Yeah, like if you see a zero, you know, for me, for Auburn, it means I need to be working hard to find somebody from Auburn. Or if you see, you know, eight from Blacksburg, you might say, maybe that's too many coming from that one community.
Yeah, got it, got it. And then the only other thing I'll say, and this is just to echo what I think Dr. Gitry and others have said, you know, it's just this being a board committee, it needs, it needs to be more public that it's there. We've got a, I'm up on the website. We've got this great page called Advisory Committees and I'm excited to click on it. And there ain't much there, right? It's, it's a form for applying for them, but you don't know what they are, right?
Well, and I, I think the plan is once the board has approved the committees, you'll see the committee memberships go up. And then you'll see our dates go up in, in that type of location on our, on our website.
Okay.
I'll just say again, if it's on our website, not everybody goes to our website. So if we're not putting that out in some way for the community at large in different locations, we're doing the same thing.
I certainly can, can also help there a little bit with Peachjar. I know Dr. Walker is really good with CAC to bring me his CAC information to push out. Also through Peachjar, one of our communication tools, we can certainly get all that information, all the committee dates on one thing and send it out regularly. That would be probably helpful to some families.
Sure.
That's easy. We can do that.
So what if we put this information out in like the news messenger or the Run Oak Times to say, this is the time that we're selecting committees. This is where you go to fill out the applications or find out what the responsibilities are.
I think there are probably folks above me in the chain of command who, who could speak to that or, or potentially make that happen, ma'am.
We need to get our communications director involved in some of those.
We could definitely do that.
Great. All right, board, any other discussion? We have a vote and a second on, on the floor. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. All right, next up, the proposed membership for the School Safety Audit Committee is presented for the board's approval. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024-25 School Safety Audit Committee as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Parton? Any discussion?
Do you want me to go first?
Yeah.
Sure.
So I think this one is actually supposed to be a superintendent committee and not a board committee. Because I'm looking at the 22, 1, 2, 7, 9, 8. The Division Superintendent shall establish a School Safety Audit Committee. I think I, I'm pretty sure I brought this up last year, that the membership doesn't conform to the expectations. Because right now it's, it looks like a liaison, a committee between law enforcement and the administration. But if you look at what it, and I, and I think there are good reasons to have a broader base for it. It's supposed to include, yes, parents, teachers, law, local law enforcement, also emergency services agencies, local community service boards and judicial and public safety personnel. So right now, the, the board isn't reflective of the expectation of the committee, rather, of the, of the, the diversity of voices that you want to have on that committee. So I would urge the administration to, to look at the expectations in Code of Virginia and try its best to broaden the membership of that committee.
Mr. Carrington, have we done that in the past? Have we had any other members? I mean, since I've been here, it's pretty much been us and the law enforcement. Have we had a wider scope in the past?
Yep. No wider scope in the past. I, I think in the past, this was set up as more of a, a safety team, safety committee. And then somewhere along the way, as we worked to complete the Division School Safety Audit, we kind of married the task with a committee we already had. So there's certainly room to expand. And, you know, also to Dr. Gitry's point, when, when you read it, it, it does seem like a different type of committee from some of the other committees that we, that we assemble. So, but in the past, it is, at least in my experience, the past six years, this has been consistent with the team we've had and the, and the kind of work we did.
Okay. Can we at least confirm that it, it should be a superintendent committee though, right? I mean, it, it makes sense if this one maybe isn't a public meeting, right? Considering the safety implications.
I'll double check. I'm, I'm not sure. I trust Dr. Gitry according to the code on that, so we will.
I could be, there could be another section of the code, but based on what I'm reading here, it's always clear if it's a board-appointed. And the board isn't mentioned in the description here, just as the Division Superintendent shall establish. So that suggests to me it's a, and because of it's about, relates to safety, why it wouldn't be a, why it would.
A public entity.
Yeah.
And I, I think we want to see if we can get the larger scope of people that you referenced as well.
Guess that begs the question, then, if it's not a board committee, do we need to vote on its membership?
That makes it even easier then. I, I don't think this is the way it should be. And I, I'm not confident to say, even if you were voting on it, to, to vote in the affirmative. We don't have it identified, right? And we don't have the right scope of people on it that we kind of used an existing committee to kind of fit a need, which I understand why that could happen, but let's get it right.
Yeah, I agree with that. Any more discussion, board? We have a motion and a second on the table, on the floor. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gitry?
No.
Ms. Parton?
I'm confused.
Yeah.
No.
Ms. Purcell?
No.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
No.
Seven opposed.
Motion fails, given the fact that we're going to keep, we're going to fix it and bring it back. Or not. At least fix it, right? Okay, next up, the proposed membership for the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, Jamie, is presented for the board's approval. Do I have a motion to approve the 2024-25 Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee as presented?
So moved.
Second.
On to Dr. Gitry. Any discussion?
Nope.
I'm going to start over here this time. I've been, I've been going, what is this, clockwise? Anybody over here want to start?
So I, okay.
Have the same concerns, so, yeah.
So I'm, I'm going to go this way. But Dr. Gitry?
I have no questions.
Great. Ms. Parton?
I do want to make mention that I am very pleased with the diverse roles of the members and their businesses. I think that it's, it touches on, I, I think that's a good thing in what we're looking for in our committee. So, and then again, you know, other than just having to work on our representation a little bit better, I'm good with it.
Great. Ms. Bond, we got your comments earlier. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Ms. Purcell?
I don't have any concerns.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Roundtree?
I, the only thing is the not applicable voting and also the previous one, I guess I should have addressed it. I mean, a committee, even if you work to, to form a consensus, the, there's still an implicit vote there, right? It's a unanimous vote. Knowing which people are eligible to vote, if they need to have a vote, seems like a, a reasonable thing to, to have on the, the committee formation page. If everybody else is good with it, I'm, okay.
One of the concerns with me with this committee has been there's supposed to be a labor representative on it and there's always been confusion about what the difference is with labor and management. There's a big difference. So that's been a concern.
Board, any more, any more discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No.
Dr. Gitry?
I'm abstaining because I'm not quite sure what Derek, if, if, what Derek was asking. If you wanted to send it back just to fix that.
It can go forward.
Okay, okay, yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. All right, next up, the 2025-26 Budget Calendar is presented for approval. Angie Bland, our Director of Finance, is available for questions. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 Budget Calendar as presented?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Ms. Purcell? Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank the, the administration for presenting their needs on our first meeting of the year this coming year, so that we can get started on this budget formation as quickly as possible.
I second that comment. Any other comments, board? No need to go around on this one? Okay, great. Oh, I'm sorry.
How is this different from last year's?
Ms. Bland, you wanted to speak to that a little bit?
And the reason I'm asking that, because I know that there was a lot of concern about the timing of, of, of when we were having the conversations, being under pressure, having to get information of the board of supervisors. So I know that, that one points earlier, but I just wanted to ask that question.
It's, it's very similar. However, this is being brought to you the first of October. I believe it was brought to you the second, the last meeting in October last year, and it skewed everything by two weeks. Two weeks makes a big difference during budget time, because we try and get this budget in front of you several times before decisions have to be made, so that we can get, get an approved budget here and then allow it to go to the county for, for their approval as well.
Okay, great.
If, if I remember, one of the concerns last time was getting the board information, that it wasn't provided ahead of time with a comprehensive, detailed budget for you to review, and that's what caused us to go back and do that. And then present it ahead of time, give you a chance to digest it and then speak to it. So, and we did not have it on the first meeting in January either. So I think all those things will work in our favor in getting more information quicker to the school board to, to talk about.
Right. Yeah, and I remember part of it also was about getting the information from the state and when we got it.
Which was delayed.
Which was delayed. Okay. I'm glad to see that you're, you're moving things up. Thank you.
So it goes on the front end, as Dr. Reagan has said, the, their dates actually built in for us to have board discussion to convert it from the superintendent's budget to our budget. And so that's one of the big changes that I have found in the calendar for this year.
Awesome. Great, board. Any more discussion? I wanted to pull up real quick, but I failed. When we had, when we had it before us earlier in the year, I think it was January 23rd. Yeah, January 24th, so this, not quite a month earlier, but certainly a lot earlier in the month. And, and again, that makes a big difference. So, great. Okay, if there's no thorough discussion, Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton? Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, Dr. Amanda Widener will present the MCPS staffing update.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, school board members and Dr. Bragan. I am here to share information on staffing, including data on our current vacancies. I do want to point out that this presentation has been slightly updated since it was presented to you last week. I'll begin by looking at our current vacancies. So again, this slide just gives you an overall picture of our existing vacancies by category. We currently have five administrator vacancies, one elementary certified position that is vacant, 2.4 secondary certified positions, and the .4 is a part-time position, eight special education certified positions that are vacant, and then 60.5 classified vacant positions. Compared to last year, most of those are similar. The administrator vacancies might be slightly higher. Elementary certified and secondary are actually lower than where they were last year. Special ed is probably similar. And our classified vacancies at this time are slightly higher than they were at this time last year. So I will go through at, at your request. You wanted to see an itemized list of all of our current vacancies. So I returned to using that format and we'll start with our administrator vacancies. So there is a list of those five, those five vacancies that I just referenced. So we continue to look for applications for our Director of Secondary Education, the Assistant Principal position at Falling Branch Elementary School, which was recently vacated because of filling the principal position there. We've conducted interviews and a candidate has been selected and recommended for that position. We are continuing to look at applicants for our School Compliance Officer position. Interviews have been scheduled for our Supervisor of Special Education. So it is possible that our next board meeting, we may be bringing a candidate before you for that position. And then our Budget Analyst Finance Manager position, we have conducted interviews. So again, it is possible that by the next board meeting, we'll be bringing a candidate forward for that position. So that's the status of our administrator positions. Moving on to our school certified vacancies, again, this is both elementary and secondary. Our one vacancy- Our one vacancy in elementary is, we have an elementary school counselor position that is open in Falling Branch, and that vacancy is due to that person moving on to another position. She's gonna be filling the Supervisor of Counseling and 504 position. So, that person is still currently in that role while we look to fill it. We are looking to fill an Instructional Technology Data Analyst Resource Teacher position, so we are accepting applications there. The part-time position that we have open is at Montgomery Central. That is for a health and PE position, so we're currently accepting applications, and we do have a long-term sub in place. And lastly, the position for Tiered Intervention Specialists. Again, this is a position where the person who is currently in that position is going to transition to another role in the school division. She is currently filling that role, but we are looking to fill it so that she can move on and fill that position. So, that's the status of those vacancies. These are our special education certified positions. So, again, I just want to emphasize these are certified positions. This is where we have the greatest number of vacancies among our certified positions. So, one of the new positions that was recently created based on the needs of students is a board-certified Behavior Analyst. So, we are currently accepting positions for that. We have two open school psychologist positions. As I think you're aware, those have been open for some time, and our Special Education Department is working to contract those services out. You're aware, we've had speech-language pathologist positions open for some time now, so we continue to have four open positions there. And again, our Special Education Department is working to contract out those services. Currently, we are doing some of that contracting through virtual services, but we're looking to contract that to get live services for our students. And then lastly, we do have one special education teacher position that we're trying to fill. There was a new position created at Blacksburg Middle School, and they are in the process of interviewing for that position. So, we hope that will also be filled soon. All right, we'll move on to our classified positions, where again, we have our greatest need right now. So, this is on the operational side. Currently, we have 17 open custodian positions, so that is a large number, and you're aware we've had a number of vacancies. That's located in many of our schools. I didn't list all the specific schools. It is, we are moving in a positive direction in that we have done a lot of interviewing, and currently, we have eight candidates coming before you tonight that have been recommended to fill those positions. So, hopefully, we'll have eight of those positions filled. I just want to explain the, what I mean on the status of these positions, where you see, where it says four candidates are recommended, that means that we have four candidates who have applied, they've been interviewed, they've been to Dr. Bragan, they've had a background check, and at this point, they've completed that whole process and are now ready to be recommended to hire. If there's a candidate in the hiring process, so you'll see there's two other candidates in the hiring process for custodians, that means that they're somewhere along the way in the process. They've been interviewed, and we may be completing some other paperwork, but we haven't finalized it yet. So, we are making some progress there. Grounds Maintenance, we had four open positions there at the end of the summer. We filled two, one in August and one in September. And as you'll recall, we did make some changes to the pay scale, which I did think helped us, but we still have two positions filled that we're accepting applications for. We still have three HVAC open positions. The good news is, for the first time in a long time, we have a candidate to bring forward to fill one of those positions. In Technology, we have two System Analyst positions, and we do have a candidate to bring forward for one of those positions. We have two open Bus Driver positions, and we do have one candidate that's in the hiring process, and then we are looking to fill one Bus Aid position. So, those are our open operational classified positions. This is a list of our classified positions in our schools and on the instructional side. And of course, you'll see the biggest numbers here are among our paraprofessionals. So, there are currently 28 paraprofessional vacancies. Two of those are in preschool, 18 in elementary, and then eight in secondary. I do want to point out that one of the reasons for this high number is that we have created and added about 20 new para-positions this year. And those new positions are based on the needs of students and our efforts to provide more specialized support and instruction to our students. So, those positions were created through, again, through the recommendation of our Special Education Department, but by adding all those positions, right now, we have a lot of vacancies there that we are trying to fill. But we do have four candidates who have been recommended, and then four more in the hiring process. At BMS, there is an Open Bookkeeper position. That has been vacated because that person is moving to another position within the school division. We have three and a half lunch/resist aides positions, and then we have an Administrative Assistant to Special Education. That position is vacated because that person has moved to another position within the school division. So, that is just a summary and an overview of all our current vacancies. That just gives you some numbers of positions that have been filled in the last month. Most of them have been in the area of classified, although, as you can see, we still have a lot of positions to fill. I want to continue to update you every month on our, our status and our progress in diversifying our workforce. So, these are numbers that's based on our employees who are in our MUNIS system as of September 23rd. 15 and a half percent of our new hires identify as minority employees, and that, that number is 32. So, 32 of our new employees that we've hired since the start of the school year are minority employees. Of our current employees, 7.6 identify as minority employees. So, again, I just want to keep you updated on that status monthly, since one of our goals is to continue to diversify our workforce. You had also requested some more specific information about retention. I had shared the exit numbers with you at our last meeting, so you could see how many employees we lost in those different categories. But to kind of put it in more context, so those meaning, those numbers have more meaning to you, I've broken it down and given you some retention rates. So, last year, we had 20 administrators who left the school division, either through retirement or resignation, and that represents 23% of our administrators. So, that means we have a retention rate of 77%. So, the question is, how does that compare to, let's say, other school divisions? So, the research that I did, I was able to come up with, from the National Center for Education Statistics, they reported out from 2021, and again, it's hard to find recent data, because a lot of this is based on studies, that principal retention, so again, that's just looking at principals, not all administrators in public schools in 2021, was 80%, meaning four out of four principals across the country were returning to their jobs as principals. Again, our administrator number does not just include principals, includes principals, directors, assistant principals, supervisors. So, it gives you some comparison. When we look at our certified teachers and instructional employees, again, that category includes not just teachers, but it would also include our counselors. It would also include instructional coaches. So, we had 105 that exited the school division last year. That was out of about 915, so that's a retention rate of 88%. How does that number compare nationally? So, again, if you look at some of the information I've provided at the bottom, according to the National Center for Education Statistics in 2021, teacher retention rate, meaning teachers returning to, to their schools or their job as a teacher in that year, was about 84%. So, our numbers are slightly better or similar. Looking at our classified employees, that's where we have some of our lower retention rates. We do see higher turnover there. So, we had 160 employees out of about 720 who did not return for the school year. So, that's a retention rate, an attrition rate of 23% or a retention rate of 77%. It's hard to find an exact comparison here. So, what I did is I looked for some data on paraprofessionals, since that's the largest group of our classified employees. And again, this is slightly older information, but in 2021, according to the National Council on Teacher Quality, paraprofessionalism was 77%. And what this study was pointing out was that at that time, the retention rate was in, I'm sorry, the retention rate was decreasing. They were seeing a higher number of paraprofessionals leaving the profession compared to 10 years earlier. I think they said in 2008, 2009, nationally, about 8% of pairs were leaving, and it had jumped considerably in 10 years. So, I would imagine that number may be continuing to go up. But again, the 77% is very similar to what we're seeing right now. And then lastly, our minority employees. We saw 25 minority employees exit last year, which is an 81% retention rate for us. Again, I tried to find some numbers that were similar, and from the Institute of Research of Labor-Employment, that looked at the retention rate, again, of, of teachers of color. So, again, this is just looking at teachers. This isn't looking at all minority employees, but they pointed out that that was an 81% retention rate, which was lower than the retention rate for white teachers. So, again, that gives you some comparison. They're not completely exact, but hopefully that helps put those numbers in a little bit of context for you. And then the last piece of information I wanted to present to you is to substitute information. I think it's important to keep you updated every month on how we're doing in terms of substitutes. So, currently, at this moment, we have 378 active substitutes in our frontline system. This doesn't mean that they're substituting every single day, but that means we have 378 individuals who are working for us as substitutes. We will be adding 17 new substitute teachers, and we will also be, today, we added eight of our former employees who retired and are doing our RHIIP program. So, we have eight new RHIIP former employees who are eligible to work for us as substitutes today. Just give you some numbers on how our fill rates have been. So, for September, we did see a slight decline in our teacher fill rate. I think it was 93% in August. We did see a larger increase in the need to fill positions in September, so our fill rate has been 86%. For paraprofessionals, it was, it was, it was relatively the same as what it was in August. In August, I think it was 44%, so it dropped a little bit to 43%. And then I've also broken it down by communities, so you can see the comparisons there. But one of the things we are looking at doing is continuing to add some additional designated subs in our schools to help with those fill rates. We currently have at least one designated school in our buildings, and we're going to look to, to add some additional designated subs. And again, designated subs are subs that are paid at a slightly higher rate. They are assigned to a building. They can work up to 150 days, and they can fill any vacancy that's there on any given day. What questions can I answer for you?
Yes, I was, I thank you for that presentation, and for kind of hearing comments and trying to adjust the presentation to account for our requests there. So, that's great. Board, any comments? Do I have anything you want to start?
I just have one question. I thank you so much on, on putting all that effort in getting that retention data. It's really helpful to see that context. My, just my one question is, for minority employees, are you including, like, people with disabilities, veterans, or is it just people of color? Or what, how are you, what is minority?
We use the federal category, so it's just based on race and ethnicity.
Okay. Okay. It's late. So, thank you. It was a lot of really helpful information.
Board, any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, board, that concludes our business meeting. Now, we are up to unfinished business. Do we have any items of unfinished business?
So, still gonna keep bringing up our hate speech, where we're at with that. Now, we got some information from legal, which for some people could throw the whole thing out. So, I'd like to know where we're at with that. Not necessarily right now, as far as the legal piece.
Yeah, I think we, it warrants us to discuss that as a board and talk about what that legal part was. And I did share that with the board chair, so I think we were talking about it at the next board meeting. I believe that was a potential item for us to discuss.
Right. We have several items that we're kind of tracking that we were waiting for.
End or retreat, if that happens before or after that.
Sure, right, right. Definitely have several items, Ms. Franklin, that we're, we gotta get back and, and review the feedback that we've gotten and make our decisions.
So, I had bought this up too, and new business, old business, whatever. The issue around training for our substitutes when it comes to our safety procedures, and if everybody in the building was, is up to date with how they should react if we have a emergency situation, whether it be an active shooter or a tornado, that everybody's on board with what they need to do.
Are you asking if we're doing that? Because we, we spoke with HR about some of our training for substitutes to make sure they're on board with our safety procedures, but we will double check and make sure we're aware of that, because that is a weakness that often occurs, is when you have substitutes, something happens in the building, and then they haven't been trained in the processes and the procedures. So, I want to make sure that we got that covered.
Okay, thank you. Board, any other unfinished business items? Any new business items?
Yeah, so, just a question for the administration. The CMS has some theatrical performances coming up, and there's a light bar in their theater stage that hasn't been hung for several years. It's been on the stage. Can we get a update on when that will be hung?
I was on a conversation with the vendor yesterday, and the date he gave me was October 25th. Start on the 21st, be done by the 25th. I told him I wanted it done earlier than that, and I got a call, I think, during our meeting earlier. That may have been from him. So, what I have right now is the latest is the 25th, and that's within the window that they need for the performance. So, we're in good shape. But it's not up yet, so.
Right.
I'll report back when it's up. I'll take a picture.
Thank you.
Great.
Because of the Metallica concert that is scheduled in Blacksburg on Wednesday, May 7th, I would like to ask the board to consider revising the 2025 calendar because of the noise and traffic disruption that it will likely cause in that community. Enter night, exit light.
Franklin?
We anticipate that. We, we were debating whether it's a workday, half-day, where we'll come out with a suggestion for the school board. We're aware that that will impact that community and make travel difficult for that time. Which school?
I mean, I'll be there, so, whatever, it's fine. It's cool.
Well, you won't be by yourself, okay? Don't think I ain't gonna be there.
I am. Board, any other items, new business? All right. Any announcements or information? Ms. Pardon?
So, I know we've, we've done this a couple times, but I did want to, because it is my community and my school, I did want to, to publicly share my heartfelt condolences to Eastern Montgomery High School on losing one of their beloved teachers, Holly King, who was a great sped ed teacher for several years and was loved by so many, not only faculty and staff, but children. It was devastating to hear of her loss, but I have been prided in the fact that the community has come together, and we have provided resources for students and our faculty and staff and administration during this difficult time. So, please know that you all are in our prayers and her family, and if there is anything you need or we can do, don't hesitate to contact us and let us know. So, I just wanted to add that.
Well, and to piggyback on that, her husband also was a graduate from Christiansburg High School, who was one of my son's great friends, he and she both, and so truly feel the loss for not only her and the community, but her family and his family.
Board, anything else? Okay, great, thank you. Upcoming school board meetings, one note for that, our next, next official school board meeting is actually a week later. It's October 22nd. I've already screwed that date up once, apologies. But there was some, some conflict with the board supervisors, right? So, we had to push back for that other week. So, just for the, for the public, if you show up on the 15th like you normally would, we ain't gonna be here. All right. With that, do I have a motion to enter into closed session, as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, to discuss, hold on, let me get it right. To discuss two personnel matters and two legal matters.
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Gitry?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. We are in closed session.